I'd like to bring this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education together. After a moment of silence, my little girl, Ms. Norton, is going to lead us in the pledge of the flag. Okay?
We're diligent to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for coming. Did we see any county commissioners? They might be one or two schoolteachers in there, as you think. A few administrators. I need a motion to accept this. Jim?
So moved.
Consideration of the agenda.
Second, sir.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Plainer?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Dangert?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Okay. Consideration of the meeting agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the meeting agenda, and I'd like to make an amendment to that.
Okay.
I'd like to amend it to allow... We've got two ladies on the agenda down at item N. And I'd like to move them up between E and F. It's a school night, and they need to get home so they can be ready for school in the morning.
Do I have a second on his amendment?
Second.
Voice roll call, please.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Plainer?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Dangert? Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
All right. Directors report.
Do you need to vote on the...
Yeah, we need to vote on the reg...
As amended.
On the agenda as it amended. Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Plainer?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Dangert?
Uh...
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Now, director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our student board is tonight is Lakin Jones. We're going to hear about her adventures in Murfisboro a little later. She's a member of the Daniel Boone volleyball team, made it to the state tournament. Very proud of that. Cindy Cooper is here with the Dairy Alliance. Come on up, and you've got a few people to bring with you.
Come on in.
A major dairy-related event recently occurred in the morning. I believe it included our own faculty.
Possibility.
I'll ask Cindy if she's going to tell us about it, and I think she has a check to present in something else a little unusual.
Yes, sir. Thank you all. I'm honored to be invited here. Washington County's doing a lot of great things in Tennessee. Y'all are pilots. I work for the Dairy Alliance. The southeast family dairy families are my boss, and I work with schoolchildren all across Tennessee and part of Virginia. And what you all are doing, you've got two things going on here in Washington County. And I guess I'm going to turn around and talk to the audience over here, too, and I hate to have my back to you. But in Washington County, you have been awarded actually four grants. Well, hello! One is the Fuel Up to Play 60 Grant. And in Tennessee, there were only thirty-two of those grants given. And with school nutrition... Come on, Ms. Caitlin, come on, Ms. Kelly, just come up here. And coordinated school health, Lamar Elementary received $4,000. And it's a partnership with the National Dairy Council and the NFL to promote healthy eating and physical activity. And you all are promoting the breakfast program. Ms. Donna, you're doing a lot with the smoothies and parfaits, aren't you? And the breakfasts. Is there something you want to tell the crowd that you're doing at that school, or Ms. Caitlin?
Yes. We... One of the things we received was a cart, so we were able to take the breakfast outside on the morning of kickoff for Morning Mile. And we're able to take that out to alternate location, out for luggage to feed the students besides only just in the cafeteria. And students love the smoothies. With the smoothie bag, you have a hypercup of yogurt, a hypercup of meal, and a hypercup of fruit. So they get a full meal in that yogurt and that smoothie. And they really enjoy it. Nutritious, isn't it?
Yes. Now, Ms. Hammy, you received part of the grant through the coordinated school health. And what did you do with your part?
We did. We used quite good that for equipment for physical education. We were tickled to death. Nothing makes our students happier than getting basketballs. But yet, several entire units, bowling equipment, pool hoops, basketballs, footballs, flag football unit in its entirety, ultimate frisbee. So lots of different avenues for physical activity. The nice thing is, is it wasn't concentrated on one specific grade level, but it's available for all of our students. But on the nutrition, nutritional side of it, I'm really, really tickled that we've targeted nutrition the way that we have because nutrition is the absolute building block of everything that we are made of. And we have given them new avenues. We're giving the kids things that they like in their cuisine to drink with, and drink the smoothies, and eat the yogurts, and they like it. And that's a huge step. I'm hearing a lot of positive things about the way that we supplemented the use of milk.
And the way we changed the menu to add into that. Guys, milk. Milk from a cow, not from an almond. I don't know how you milk an almond. Only thing that's really milk is from a cow. And I want you to remember that. And that has so much more nutrition in it, and I just can't help myself. I have to tell you that. Not only do the kids need three servings a day, but adults do, too. Adults do, too. Did everybody hear me? But I just want to go ahead and present you this check again. I know we've done it once, but come up here, ladies. Y'all worked hard. And it's for Washington County. Excuse me? Yes, yes. $4,000 to Lamar. And we've got another check also that we need to tell you about. This one is Fuel Up to Play 60. Three of your schools, Ms. Caitlin, applied for what's called a dairy optimization grant. Now, down the road in Johnson City was our first school in Tennessee to pilot the bulk milk dispensers. Y'all remember Core H Camp for kids, when you had the bulk, you had the cups? Well, guess what? You all are going to get three of those. You're funded $6,600. And guys, if you have never tasted milk, I call them the still cows. If you've never tasted the milk out of the still cows, you're not living. It will get milk back into the kids. Now, I know we had some federal regs that made it tough on milk, chocolate milk especially. But if we're going in a different direction, and you all will be the third district to pilot the bulk milk dispensers. And guys, if we can get the milk in the kids, not only are you helping the kids, you're helping the dairy farmers, too, right? And we're farming, right? Y'all know that. So, y'all have any questions? And I could talk forever, and I won't talk forever.
So, over $10,000 in grant money you're awarding them?
Yes, sir. Three schools that have given this history. And Ms. Caitlin, David Crockett, Lamar Elementary, and Boone's Creek. Is that correct? So, you're going to start those. You're phasing them in. She's going to do it right, so that it's successful. She's going to do one school at a time, aren't you, Ms. Caitlin? So, any questions? Guys, fifty percent of her waste comes from milk cartons. And what we hear from the kids, not only decrease the waste and the cost of the waste, we also hear the kids say it doesn't taste like milk cartons. It tastes better. It tastes fresher. And they'll drink it. And you know, it's not nutrition if they do not consume it, right? So, any questions at all? Win a little... Yes, ma'am?
What's the chance of the finding lactose-free milk for some of those kids who have those allergies?
Well, now, you're talking two things there. Allergy is an allergy, and lactose intolerance is not an allergy. So, there's two things you can do. And there is available some products. She would have to maybe put it on the bid. I don't know if your current vendor in the bulk bags has the lacto... Yeah, I don't think... Don't think they have that yet. But you know, there are products available. And you know, you can outgrow the lactose intolerance. And you still eat yogurt and cheese, some of the hard cheeses. Not... So, there's a way to get dairy, good nutrition.
Sandy?
Yes.
The cups.
Yes, sir.
How much is the cups?
The cups, depending on the size and which type you get, they're going to run... And I've got, I see in a price quote, I've got some data. The cups, four hundred washable cups, it's about $30 for a case of thirty-six. Now, that's just a roundabout estimate, probably $325 for four hundred cups. Now, if you get... I recommend for the little kids, the little, what they call the squat cup. You won't have as many masses. If you're going to high school, you can go the taller. But you've got to at least probably have a nine-and-a-half or ten-ounce cup to meet the reg, to get the eight-ounce federal reg milk in that cup, so that nobody gets in trouble that way. So, you're talking... And then the dish trays, I found seventeen trays that'll hold twenty-five cups, around $400. So, you know, there's still some other funding that's needed for this. Yeah, reusable. Now, at one of her schools, they may not have the dish machine in place. So, what she's probably going to break even on that, still be using the paper. But she's going to get the nutrition in the kids and move the dairy and get them drinking good stuff. So, that one, you may have to go disposable. So, but the other two, you'll need the dish machine, dish cups. So...
Do you have a question?
Great job.
Thank you.
And congratulations. I'm proud of Washington County. Thank you for everything you're doing. Okay. And there's a minute cut here for all the kids, too, Ms. Caitlin. Well, you need to be...
Jared will take it.
All right. On three, two, one, and move.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There's a cooler in the front of the room. Caitlin, I'm going to ask you to wheel that out in a minute. Full of cartons of chocolate milk. And every child leaving here tonight gets your carton of chocolate milk, unless you're allergic. In this case, I'm good. Hey, Randy. We've got a whole bunch of Jonesboro Elementary School students here tonight that are going to be performing collections from a Gatorland's Day presentation that's going on. Is it this week or next week?
This Monday.
Okay. So, bring them on in and tell us what we need to know.
All right.
The music educator... Where's going? Is John Durham, my friend and fellow Methodist... There he is. And gifted organ player. And... Take it away.
Stand up straight. Go, shoulders up high.
You want to move that? I just got moved there.
Step up. Step up. So...
Come on.
I have the microphone.
(coughing)
Thank you, Mr. Durham, thanks for all of your work.
Do you have more grade with these students?
These are four.
Fourth grade. Yes, great.
Monday at 11:00.
And Jess, get out of the phone, put your... You can call in at school. Okay, this doesn't really mean anything about you, just take it away.
We have a present, a PowerPoint presentation. We'd love to show you some pictures. Hello, my name's Cory Lauren, I'm the bridge teacher at Crockett High School. This is our fourth time coming to see you all. This will be our fourth European tour that we are taking. We started back in 2015 and since then we have been to five different countries. Those include Scotland, England, France, Italy and Greece. So this will be our fourth tour. And we're adding another one to the mix this time and it'll show up here in just a second. It's so we've had a lot of interest for this trip and we'd love to tell you all about it to get the question to go. Here it is, wonderful, thank you. All right. Okay, here is a quote, "I was able to explore new horizons, see the world from a different perspective. This adventure was one of the best I have experienced." Over the years, we have totally had this, this quote essentially encompasses what a lot of the students come back and tell us after a student tour. We actually have two students who just went on the tour this year, 2019, to kind of give you guys their perspective of their experience going abroad for the first time. Here is some pictures from the tour. Actually, the one to the right are the students going down to the London Underground, I believe. To the right, this is Jessica Worley, you all know her. She's the culinary teacher at Crockett High School. She's my travel guru and kind of my plus one on these European tours. That's us to the right in Normandy. And here are some other student pictures from this past tour. The past tour, if you don't remember 2019, they started in Edinburgh, Scotland, went down through York, Stratford-upon-Avon, London, and then ended in Paris. And the tour, of course, in two years will be a bit different, but we have two students. The first one's Mackenzie Robinette, she'd like to talk to you about her experience and then Riley, let, we'll go after her, okay?
Okay, so I was able to go to Scotland, London and Paris for 10 days, like Ms. Warren said, last summer. I was super excited for this trip, but I was nervous. This is my first time out of the country. My parents didn't go, so it's just me. But this trip provided a lot of firsts for me. I took my first plane ride, I went out of the country for the first time. Got to make some awesome vlogs, so it was a really good trip. But student travel is a really awesome thing. I think every high schooler should travel as a high school student. It just allows you to grow and see that there is more outside Jonesboro for you to experience and that there are other people out there. And it's just a really cool cultural experience and the food is amazing, so I think is an amazing experience and if you have the opportunity, it's a lot of hard work to get to go. I know I paid for my trip, I worked and paid for my own trip, but it meant that much more to me because I did all that myself, so I think it's an awesome experience and every high schooler that has the opportunity should get to go.
Perigee Nation, the act of traveling, an excursion especially on foot or to a foreign country. Students who are given the opportunity to travel firsthand get to see what they've learned in the classroom and it's just absolutely amazing experience. Like Mackenzie and Ms. Warren said, we went to Paris, France, Paris, France, England and Scotland. I think the most rewarding experience for me though was getting a job and being able to pay for it all by myself, like it was something and the food was great. We also learned about how tall these structures were, like the Arc de Triomphe is over 100, over 160 feet tall and Eiffel Tower is over 980 feet tall. And that doesn't really click until you're standing beneath it and it's towering over you. So it's really cool and I would love to get an opportunity to go again. Now, what they didn't tell you is Mackenzie's younger sister, Gracie, is wanting to go on this next trip and Riley has actually shown interest in going on the next trip as well, so trying to get the travel bug going on these European trips. Really quickly, here's the new tour of 2021. So it would be an 11-day tour, 10 to 11 days. We start in Paris, go down to the south of France using the train system to Avignon, which I know Dr. Flanery's daughter lived, Allison, lived around that area. And then we would stay two days in Provence, which is an absolutely beautiful area of France. Then go to the medieval city of Carcassonne, which I'll tell you a little bit about, and then we would end in Barcelona. We know we're going to get a lot more interest as well in this tour, especially because the Spain component with a lot of the Spanish students at Crockett. Usually we've kind of been London, England, France or Italy and Greece, so now this is kind of encompassing the Spanish students as well. So here are some pictures of places we're going. We'll start in Paris, here are some pictures, you have Notre Dame, Arc de Triomphe. Riley told you how tall the structure is, she actually walked to the top of that and had a great view of the Eiffel Tower. So a lot of people think, go to the Eiffel Tower, go to the top and kind of look around, but really Arc de Triomphe has a great view of Paris and the Eiffel Tower. Provence is known for its lavender fields and those will hopefully be in bloom or blooming once we go. Here's Avignon, there's the Papal Palace when the Great Schism happened for the Catholic Church, we'll see that. Carcassonne is a medieval city, it's actually where the Moors were stopped, it's the Islamic State that came through Spain, wiped out all Spain, came to France and really conquered all of Europe, they stopped in Carcassonne because the wall structure is so, was so strong. And then Barcelona, of course, you have Parc Gaudi, Parc Well and the Sagrada Familia. And Ms. Worley's going to talk to you about why we choose EF.
What is EF?
EF Tours stands for Education First Tours. They are a travel company and they have been in business for over 50 years, they have 50 years of experience. On tour with us, we, our number one concern is the safety of our children, so we have a 24-hour-a-day tour director, she stays with us the entire time. So we are never alone and if we experience any problems, then she can actually call the EF company and talk to them. It's a peace of mind policy, we also require that everybody have travel insurance so that it also covers overseas emergencies or if there's an emergency here at home, they will pay to fly the children back. So it is, we do require them to have insurance. It's a 24-hour on-call service both for us on the trip as well as parents, if they have an issue, they have a 24-hour on-call access to EF Tours. So we are planning on anywhere between May 31st, 2021 to June 17th, 2021, that says 2020, that is not correct. But we typically, the Brits leave around June 2nd to June 6th, but when they finalize our trip is when they book the airline tickets, so it'll be around whenever they get the best deals on the flights for all of us. So what is included in the cost of the trip? The kids actually have to pay for absolutely nothing except for lunch and souvenirs. So it includes all round-trip airfare, it includes quality hotel rooms, 24/7 tour director, on-tour transportation, we have tour guides, we have breakfast and dinner, traveler support team, a tour donation page, so when the kids sign up for the trip, we put a link on all of their social media so that anyone can donate for Christmas, birthdays, et cetera. This is also why we like to plan two years in advance so that it's a very affordable payment plan monthly for our kids. The few things that the kids do need to cover are if they choose to get a college credit, they can actually pay and do a college credit, their passport and visa fees, airport baggage fees, which there are none, lunches and snacks and spending money. So basically, I've been on all of those lists thus far and the maximum amount that I spend out of pocket just on lunch and souvenirs is less than $300 on the trip. So everything is paid for before they leave, so nothing, they don't have to worry about anything except for lunch when they get there. So we would love for your approval for us to go on our next trip. Yes?
To ask y'all a question, how many, you say 10, last year, how many went?
We had 38 last year.
Okay.
This year.
Move all together, one group.
Yes, so we have chaperones who are responsible, Cory and I are the main chaperones, and then we have subchaperones who are responsible for a group of students when we are traveling. For example, when we get on the metro, some of the kids have never been on a subway system whatsoever. So we have a very efficient counting system, there's always the adults as the last person on in case somebody gets left behind. We have safety plans in place if they do happen to not get off of the subway for some reason. So we have chaperones responsible for small groups so that it's very manageable. Yes, sir.
I move for approval, but before we vote, I want to ask the students a question.
Okay.
This is an educational opportunity, right?
Yes.
Why was the Eiffel Tower built to begin with?
It was for the World Fair. Yes.
That's right, what year?
I couldn't tell you the year.
Well, I couldn't either, but...
1890.
You're right, on the World's Fair.
Good job.
Second.
Okay, so now we're in the session, so when does the subchaperon list, signup list come out?
So as... We have a 70-person waiting list.
Every teacher.
Every teacher at David Crockett High School would like to travel with us. We, as students pay, it's every six students, a chaperone is required.
What is the price of this trip?
The cost is $3,900. I was going to say 38. It's $3,900. So the payments are about $200 to $210 a month.
Like 180, if they sign, if they sign up soon, it's like 180 something a month.
I try weekly and it's only 88 dollars every two minutes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'm asking for a roll call vote.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Ellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanery?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dangert? Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Thank you so much, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
You could move after your chaperone, for.
Kristen Spears of the United Way was next on the agenda, but she had a scheduling conflict, will have her in in December, which somehow seems appropriate for the United Way. Our new grant writer, Toni McKinney, has been working tirelessly in a position for which there was really no job description, I think, I told her, you're going to have to make this up as you go. And she has prepared a report to you and this lady has been busy. Toni, take it away.
Hi, good evening, I'm Toni McKinney and I'm your new grant writer for Washington County and I just wanted to give you a glimpse into my world. So welcome to the world of grant writing. First, just to make sure you understand how grant writing works, there are, I cannot see, I'm a teacher, this doesn't work for me, can I move? Okay. Sorry, I just, I move, okay. So there's a variety of grants that are out there that are offered through corporations, through foundations, through states and federal. Eligibility is where you have to really look at before you ever go any further, is are we eligible to even apply? So it's a very strict process and qualifications are very specific. And there's a report called the 990 reports that sometimes helps us see what do they already fund, who did they fund? If I don't see an educational group being funded, then I know that grant is not appropriate for us. Also, finding the right marriage in the sense of who is willing to take on the project that would be appropriate for that grant is another aspect of grant writing. Funding rules apply from the grant tour as well as from the county finance department. They're very, very strict on how you do the funding and how you write your budgets and also the approval process of certain qualifications depending on whether it's $500 or $1,000 or $10,000 in the county finance department. So both of those I have to make sure is followed to a T. Deadlines are mandatory for submission, but also for doing the actual projects. So it's one of those things, they will want a report of how was it achieved, how was accomplished, who was benefited from the grant funding. New grants open up in cycles, some grants are in clustered fall, winter, spring, summer and you will see that cycle again and again, some is ongoing and some is just a one-time thing. So it's one of those, you're constantly researching, as we discussed before, it's a constant process, you're always researching grants because they open and close and sometimes you only have a window of a month to write the grant from start to finish. Quick view, what I have for you, in case you just couldn't see it up here, is just things that I've done so far since August 1st. So here is this report. You're welcome. So in this quick review, what I do is I always keep a track of exactly what I have been working with and working on, what my projections are of getting a kind of, a report back from the grant tour. So this is, since August, and so if you just see here, I've done different categories, list of the grants. When do I submit it, because that helps me to revisit it for the next year, because that means it's usually open then. The amounts that I've asked for, whether it was awarded, whether it's pending or not awarded, and announcement dates. If they do give me an email back of reasons, I try to put that in there so I know how to tweak it for the next year, it was not funded. Here's the continuation of it, it's on the backside on page two. We did a huge cluster of mini breakfast grants where they would have, for example, carts going out from the cafeteria, away from the cafeteria, give an alternative location for students to receive food and come in and then go to their classroom or take the food to the classroom. So it's called an alternative breakfast grant. So we have a cluster right there, it's like six schools doing that. Another focus is, for example, the Tennessee Clean Fuels, that's a unique grant because actually that ties in with our county government and not us pissed about the propane buses, that's a potential depending, of course, on your vote tonight, on whether we would pursue that grant. Other grants that we pursued is, for example, all the PE teachers looking for a program to collect data when the kids are doing their exercises and trying to give them the best kind of exercise program. Another type of grant that I was doing is a Rockwall for Fall Branch. So for my position, I travel throughout the whole entire system all the time and I have meetings and communications, see if this grant will work, what do they want to do, what kind of projects they want to pursue. Grants that are in progress right now, just opened up this month, we have a very new initiative that we're doing here in Washington County, which is the Governor's Civic Seal. So the Governor's Civic Seal, what they've done this year is that they opened up funding to try to help schools supplement whatever they may need to obtain the seal. You don't need the grant to obtain the seal though, but it's one of those that we are going to try as Washington County to obtain the seal. 80% of schools has to individually obtain the seal for Washington County to obtain that seal and that would be on the report card. So it's a very, it's a good goal to achieve and I already have like a high school on board ready to go, so I'm just working with the other schools, try to accomplish this goal. Another component, for example, we were talking about the equipments where one of the schools didn't have a dishwasher and so the TNT Service Equipment Grant would be for the dishwasher at David Crockett High School. And we have future grants that are coming up, these are the ones that I know of, those are not the ones that I have not found yet, if that makes sense. So that list will increase and get longer, those will shut and then I'll get new grants. So every month I'm always writing new grants. Any questions on these?
I just want to say thank you. I know there's a lot of work, I mean, we're just skimming the surface, but thank you very much because I think this is well needed and I just appreciate your hard work.
Oh, you're most welcome.
And dedication for doing that. Thank you.
I've got a, on the eligibility piece of it, I mean, if you're looking at these, you're looking at grants right now that are, that they make grants to school systems. And where I'm going with this is some foundations and others may make grants, but they may not make them to the actual school or the governmental unit, but they might put them into, into somebody like Quest.
Yes.
I mean, I'm just wondering...
I do know exactly, absolutely. So you have 501(c)(3) which we request. And so there are companies, like for example, there's a foundation in Johnson City called Mooneyhand and they only go to 501(c)(3)es.
Which we're not.
So Johnson City Foundation, that's high as in with their schools, did get that grant because that's the way they went about getting it. So yes, 501(c)(3)es are very specific, a lot of companies do donate to 501(c)(3)es.
And then they can direct those dollars, that local 501(c)(3).
Yes, you can do that with that partnership, so it's one of those, they get awarded and they... So, it's one of those, they get awarded, and then who are they writing for, if they partnership to that, then there has to be an agreement between the two groups, and then you just transfer it over. Yes, that, that does happen, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
And some of these are businesses, I'd like to know the businesses that donate, or do, you know, give us grants, so we can shop there. All know that I need a reason to shop.
Well, most people are very familiar with Walmart, because they have like a little donation thing right there in the customer service, you just take it out, write what you want, they give you like a gift card, that's very common. Aldi's is the one that I have been trying to go after.
That's a German company.
It is, and actually it's two brothers, there's two parts, that, was it, Something Joe's is the other brother, they took the north side of, it's a good story, but anyway. Yes, Aldi's does educational, as well as looking at physical fitness and health. So, it, there's two components in which you can apply for Aldi's, but is very good with education. So, it, the idea is where do you locate to an Aldi's community, where the workers are? And so, there are a lot of companies where, for example, John Deere, if there's an employer that's volunteering for your school, for example, then you have an end to write a grant for, let's say, the robotics club. So, there are different stipulations depending on the actual company. Any other questions?
Have you partnered with that parent that works in John Deere?
Actually, McGamis. Over at, he's the one that knows all about that, he's the one that explained that to me, because I was asking about that grant. He's like, so this is how this works, so yeah, they already are working on that component with robotics, with Mr. McGamis. You good?
Good.
Moving on. All right, so, purpose. The purpose really for grants is for supplementing current projects, pro, programs, or creating new programs, but it's not for supplanting, because you get in big trouble for that, and we don't wanna ever do that. Grants are also about teamwork, so every time I go and I see a grant, I'm like, ooh, this looks good for Crockett, Boone, South Central, Fall Branch, Lamar. I go to those people, I'm like, are you interested in doing X, Y, and Z? I just got an email from a guidance counselor, they saw the same grant I did, just if I had a chance this week, I'm like, great, so we'll partnership on that. So, I drive down there, we meet, we talk about how we can approach it, what partnerships we can use, because some grants require, you know, ETSU is a partnership, or an industry is a partnership, for example, if you're doing a CT grant. So, but the thing is, the turnaround's very quick, you have to get those letters in really fast, for like an MOU, for example. But all of it, what's amazing about grants is the positive educational experiences the students, as well as the staff and faculty gets through grant, uh, grants. Because normally you wouldn't get to do that experience unless you had that outside fan, funding brought in. So, I just wanna show you an example of this. This was a TVA BVI, which is Patel. So, in this right here, what you notice is that the high schoolers became the teachers. And then toward the end, you saw the fourth and fifth graders giving full-fledged presentations. And every single child, they didn't, they just went and did it. They all spoke, they all read, it didn't matter what level they were at, they did it, they were engrossed in this project. And the high schoolers are like, man, this is a lot of work. Because they had to do all of their own creating, I gave them the standard, the fourth grade standard, this is what we're built from, we're using your knowledge, bringing it down to their level, how does that work? And so, they created all the paperwork, all the presentations, all the rubrics. And so, they got to really experience that R field, which was teaching. And so, and the students really enjoyed it. Now, Ms. Bergner, who was my partner with this, um, sorry. Thank you. This is Ms. Bergner, if you didn't know who she was, she works at South Central, she's been there for five years. She has taught third grade for two, fourth, and fourth grade for three years, and this year she moved and transitioned to fifth and sixth grade math. She also is the science club coordinator, she does science club every Wednesday afternoon for the students, and they are loving it. She unfortunately got really sick today, and she had to leave school, so she, I'm passing on her information. So, what she wanted to share with you is her students' experiences, and a few quotes that she has gathered for me. Here are the quotes. For example, "The project gave me something to look forward to. When I came to school, I had to see the fish every day. I don't think of just fish in a tank anymore, I see deeper understanding of aquaponics. In three days' time, they saw growth from seed, and they were just mesmerized, I'm like, how does this happen?" They learned about bacteria, they learned about all the chemical components, pH, nitrates, nitrites, they were using this language in fourth and fifth grade. It was very amazing. Next, "This project was a lot of hard work, but fun. I liked the project because it made me work harder." Ooh, I love that. "I get excited in thinking about learning something different in science." This one, this one touched my heart a little bit. "Felt good being a part of something instead of being homeschooled. I am thankful for the experience, thankful for every person that made this project happen." I mean, that brought a little tear to my eye. "I love the group work and working with high school students, I will always remember this lesson, because I had to teach it." And so, they really were engrossed in this, and they'll remember what aquaponics is all about. "I love the responsibility of making sure the fish were fed every day." So, now there you have the responsibility of this project. My favorite course, "This project helps me love science." So, I thought that was very impressive. Next person I'd like to introduce you is Chris Tipton. He is my other person that has been working with me. We were working on trying to do graphic arts, how can we really get it growing, how can we look at the technology component of graphic arts in industry and in college, and make sure the kids are adapted to this program? So, we just reached out just to ETSU. ETSU happened to be writing a grant, and so when they're, yes, sir.
Chris teaches at Crockett, Grand Central.
Yes. Sorry.
I think most of you think that. But we're okay.
So, anyway, they were working on a grant that worked with Adobe programming, and trying to implement it in schools and do teacher workshops, and have the grant pay for that. Unfortunately, no one in Tennessee got the Appalachian Grant. But because we reached out to them, they are like, we're gonna, we wanna still work with you. So, now we create a partnership with the Communication Media Group at ETSU. And so, what was nice is that we were trying to say, how, how do we get our kids ready to come to you? What do we need to do? What do they need to learn specifically? And Chris was very open to any suggestions whatsoever with the ETSU. He has worked though, in industry, for like sixteen years. He's worked with Snyder Signs, six years in vinyl application and manufacturing, ten years as graphic supervisor overseeing final design, production, and application of prints and vinyls. He worked on design and installation of different packages from NASCAR, Chatters, Wellmont, MSHA.
United States of the United States.
Yeah.
Valid Health.
Valid Health, yep. Bright Ridge, ETSU, and now this is the second year at Crockett. And so, I wanna just let you hear from him, his experience of building this partnership with ETSU.
So, like she was saying, thank you, Tuanne, for actually working with this grant, because I had no idea what I was getting into, and I said, I need some computers, well, how can I get them? So, what ETSU, like she said, they didn't get the grant, we have a technology grant out right now, but since we reached out to them for a partnership, ETSU came back to us and said, well, here's what we're gonna do anyways. We're gonna offer free certification testing to any of your students that you feel are ready to come up here and take the certification test for Adobe. We're gonna open up our D2L to any teacher that may be a student, and they're also in the process of trying to figure out how to get teachers up there that aren't students to take Adobe classes for free, and take these certifications. That way they can take that back to their classroom, and just expand it more than a basic English classroom, they can go well beyond anything with Adobe, using that product. So, they're also supposed to be opening up their lesson plans, and everything for me to take back to my classroom to get these kids ready for these certification tests. All this is free of charge, so even if we don't get the technology grant, we're actually getting more than what the grant, the value of the grant.
Yes, it's ninety dollars a...
Each one of those tests are a hun, right at a hundred dollars for the certification test, and the three-week class to get certified is a six-hundred-and-fifty-dollar class. So, if you're not a student, it's open to the public, you have to pay six-hundred-and-fifty dollars to take a three-week class, which they're giving to us for free. So, sky's the limit when it comes to that, so we're real excited about it. So, any questions for me?
Do you have a class that actually just does the Adobe?
I have a third period, I asked, my third period, I've set it up to do the Adobe certification, so they're having to take Digital Arts one and two before they get into that class.
How many kids can you have in there?
Right now I have twelve, which, that's, for that type of certification, that's about the size it really needs to be. We can go larger, and with my second year, I'm still trying to get everything in the right direction, getting them in there, but yeah. Anybody else? You're good?
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you all. Thanks, Tony.
So, just wanted to share with you that there are different avenues that can open up when we're looking through and trying to find grants and partnerships. So, basically, thank you for this opportunity, I appreciate your time.
With the retirement of Susan Ken, Tuanne will be transitioning into the county ala liaison with Quest Board, the Quest Foundation. She met with them earlier this week, and already found a way to increase the revenue stream after one meeting. And you didn't mention that you also took receipt of and oversaw delivery of several thousand dollars worth of laboratory equipment from Eastman Chemical.
Yes, that was, that was like Christmas for science people, I'm just saying. So, basically, Dr. Yates and I went there, like it's six-thirty, made sure we're the first ones in, and there were tons of glassware raring from things we'll never use at a high school classroom, but you have your beakers, your graduate cylinders, your flasks, your test tubes, and also like your stoppers and so forth. Now, one beaker, if it's a thousand milliliters, can go up to like three, four hundred dollars, like for one piece of glassware, which of course Dr. Flory knows, and so I made sure we grabbed all the really big stuff from the high school, but they even had these little cute, little small ones too as well. So, it's really good to have this glassware, because you know, when you break it, if you crack it, you can't use it, so it's always good to have an influx of glassware. They do this, they'll do this two years from now, they'll invite us again. So, he took his truck, he filled up his bed, I took the van, I filled up the van, and we were able to go for Crockett, for Boone, and I would say like four or five other middle schools have been given this glassware. And so, that was just, that was awesome.
It was Christmas.
It was Christmas. Thank you.
We are the right person. Thank you again, thank you, Chris, for being here. All right, in your Google folder, Board Member, any comments on this, by the way, before you head?
Glad we got grant writers.
Been talking about it for decades. In your Google folder, there is a document titled Cancel A and E Contract with BLAS, sorry for the acronyms. The text of the letter is self-explanatory. Mr. Chairman, I request and recommend board approval at this time.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion. Second. Any discussion?
Thank you, Tony, and all those for what they've done, we appreciate it, all the help that they've given us over the years, so.
So, are they paid for, for these things that they did for us?
Yes, the courthouse picked it up.
So, motion is to what? To accept this letter?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Will we not use them in the future? I mean, it says we're in the contract, I always thought we used them for different projects, that we weren't locked down to one specific. Going forward, if you choose to use based on us and Street for a project, you'll get an invoice from them. For the Jonesburg project, including the bond law, the courthouse picked up the tab, and anything was that he did for the school system. That's over. Official notification of that, but no certainly. There's an architectural contract still in place for the Jonesburg design.
Right.
It's another company?
No, with, with BLAS.
Okay, so this is for that specific project?
It's working right now, and you're free to hire them.
Okay. I just wanna clarify. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Dillinger?
Yes.
Mr. Plainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hannon?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
After five months of meetings, an accountless hours of work, a five-year plan update is ready for board consideration. I believe that's in the drop box as well. There's a couple of typos, luckily we now have an English teacher, the members of senior staff will go through it before it's published. But, Mr. Chairman, I now recommend approval of the current update of the five-year master plan.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, I need a mo, I need a motion to accept the five-year plan.
I'll make a motion to accept the five-year plan.
Have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Plainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hannon?
Yes.
Ms. Dillinger?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Ah.
Thank you. The board's annual agenda, adopted in July, provides its certain administrative reports to be delivered in November of each year. These specific items required are listed in...
These specific items required are listed in your policy 1.703. You will find that report in your drop box. Dr. Adams was instrumental in putting the report together and asking him to come forward. And any questions you may have about that report, we'll try to address this time. But I do, uh...
We presented some of this earlier, may, may have been the August school board meeting, and there were questions, I think it was three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. We didn't have answers to yet because the state had not populated the levels of effectiveness of our teachers. And that happened in the middle of October. That's how we were able to generate the answers to these questions. I'm happy to go over it if you have questions. Um, if you don't have any questions, I don't have to go over.
Since this is an annual agenda item, I would recommend that you approve of it.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Y'all doing a good job in HR, obviously. And for those that helped mentor those young teachers.
Thank you, sir.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh.
Thank you. Daniel Boone High School senior, student, school board member of Lakin Jones, has this month's wheat on Washington County.
And I bet she'll talk about volleyball soon.
Any way you want to press that back.
Okay. First, um, we have math on the move. Um, a bunch of our educators from Washington County went to my session on Saturday to help improve their math class with number talks. Number talks is like a way of communicating to math classrooms and strengthening students mentally and improvement overall with math. And that's all. Um, Ritchie's first principal, Peggy Green, she was honored as they put up a new storybook trail throughout their track and field. Um, she dedicated thirty-eight years to Washington County, eight of them being to Ritchie. Um, the UT president came to both high schools. Uh, he talked to David Crockett seniors about the new scholarship program, UT Promise. And he came to Boone and he talked about, um, the same thing with any student interested in going to UT. Um, Danny Boone went to State a couple times this year so far. Um, cross-country, it was their ninth year in a row going. Both boys and girls placed eighth in Murphysboro. And for volleyball, this was our first year in Danny Boone history for AAA, going to State. We also placed around eight. And, um, it was the first time in twenty-one years that we had gone that far ever, I think. Um, so that was a great thing to be a part of. Um, the ninth annual musket ball, Boone took a rainy home game win. And, um, Brendan Blair, he's right there, he rushed for over two hundred yards, which was a big help to Boone that night. And it's a great night. That's all that happened.
And she explained to me why her jersey's white and everybody else's is red. If you want to know, ask her, 'cause it's a long answer.
It's a mirror.
I got you.
There.
Thank you, lady. Yesterday, or actually, I think this morning, I sent you the final copies of the inter-local agreement and the lease agreement for the new Jonesboro school project. If you have any questions about these documents, we are fortunate to have your attorney, Scott Bennett, in the room. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody wants to know anything about those very lengthy lawyeries, legalese documents, ask him out. Please don't ask me. He's the guy.
Mr. Bennett, what did that document say?
It was just the...
Hold on a minute, if I could say that with your verbatim wit. Uh, how about this, you get a school, you don't have to pay for it. Um, the Reader's Digest version is that the, uh, the town is acting as the, uh, the financier of the short term for the purchase of the school. The county will be leasing that school long-term for the benefit of the school board. The arrangement is such that the school board, the county, and the town are each participating in the design of the school. The town wants to control the finance, the construction proj, process, to control the costs. That was some concern of some of the board members over time because obviously there's some ways that you can cut corners, but increase long-term expenses. So, uh, what we worked out was a compromise whereby there would be a review committee to look at the final design. So, so you have a voice on the design committee. The town then takes the designs, puts together a final construction plan. They come back to the full board, the full town board of Mayor and Alderman, and then the commission, and each body decides what they think about it, and they can provide written input back to the town. Uh, the town and then the county decide, okay, do we wanna go forward or not? The town digests these comments. It comes back to the school board, the town, and the county. We provide a second round of comments. And then the town and the county have a second time to say, do we wanna go forward or not? So there's ample opportunity for your concerns to be voiced, not only on the design phase, but on the approval phase. Uh, once you get the building, it's like any other building. Uh, the, the operational costs are gonna be taken care of, uh, through your operations budget. Uh, there's also gonna be a facility off to the side that will really, in design, is going to be a joint town-county recreational center, really, that benefits the entire community. But the board will have first use in that property. You're not gonna have any burden to keep or maintain it. Uh, and the big piece, from, from my perspective on the liability side, is you don't have to maintain the security of it during the day. Uh, that's gonna be on the other governmental entities. And, um, it should benefit the community as a whole. So I gave the short answer. There's a longer answer. And if you want any more information, I'm happy to answer questions. That's best of the game.
All right, one question I asked. Some of the original documents that I read, they wanted us to carry a five or six or ten, I don't remember, million-dollar liability policy or insurance policy on the building itself. And I guess I don't understand how we could do that as being a tenant of the building until it's paid for.
Great question. So, um, with any kind of long-term commercial lease, which, that, that's not exactly what this is, but it's, it's analogous. With any kind of long-term commercial lease, the tenant frequently is the one carrying the insurance costs. Now, what's different about this is that the county is technically the tenant. We will, the...
We just get to use it.
We get to use it, that's right. And the reason that we are not technically the tenant is because we are not a funding body. We cannot raise taxes, we cannot pay the rent. So we are legally not the tenants, but we envision that the county will dedicate the building to our use. So it becomes a school building.
So who, who contracts for that insurance amount and who pays for it?
Okay, so as an operations cost, we would have to pay for the insurance on a building that we are using. Now, the amount of insurance...
You say "we"?
We, the board.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I don't work for the cabinet, I work for you.
I thought so.
So the, um, so that is gonna be part of your operations budget.
Okay.
Now, that's to be worked out because, and, and I'm, I'm going deeper because you asked a particular question, but the answer's a little different, okay? So you asked about the document, and it spells out insurance. The, the insurance burden is explicitly on the county. Now, the county can delegate that responsibility to us, subject to some specific limits. We are not obligated to procure insurance that you can't get through the trust. So if the insurance trust says, Chairman, Director, we're only gonna write for two million, that's the limit, okay? Now, that's not practically going to happen. But you are protected in the agreement so that you do not have to secure insurance over and above what you ordinarily get through the insurance trust.
Well, that was my next question. Does Tennessee Risk Management, will they insure it to us in that scenario?
Yes, sir. I already spoke about that, you're taken care of. And also, uh, the, the town had pushed down on the county some very specific indemnity requirements that I knew were over and above what our insurance would cover. And so we worked into the agreement that whatever the county agrees to, they, they will never be able to push those indemnity requirements back on us because we know we can't get insurance to do that. If, if the county wants to carry that burden, in fact, they have agreed to, they can because they're a funding body. They can raise funds to cover an indemnity. We can't. We're, we're bound by our insurance agreements.
Where, where are we at in the process now as a whole? And where, what's the next step for the board?
Okay, great question. So, uh, my understa, I think I told you during, during dinner, I was driving through Knoxville, and I got an updated version of, of, of contract, which I was really happy to see, driving through Knoxville in the middle of the afternoon. Uh, my understanding is that the town and, uh, the county are gonna sign their respective agreements tomorrow. I know the county is. The town may have to wait till next week for some procedural issues. The board, um, was it August? Was it that long ago? Authorized us to go forward on the interlocal agreement. The only document we are signing is the interlocal agreement. And our part of the interlocal agreement has remained intact since y'all ratified it. And you may recall that part of the resolution was you empowered me to take a look and, and basically through the kill switch, if I saw a problem, the, the town and the county have been very, very good partners and have been taking care of our legal interests so that I do not see a problem. In my opinion, uh, as soon as we, we get a final version of the documents that they want y'all to sign, and I want to be sure that it's the real one, I believe that your executive committee can sign on behalf of the board and you're good to go. So I think your work is done. And, and I don't wanna sound like I'm, I'm being, I mean, I'm kinda laughing about this because it, there's always one more version. It's because of a very complex bond arrangement that different banks and different lenders are having to jump through. It's not because of anybody changing their mind at the last minute. You have lenders who are literally in other cities who are saying, do this, do that. So we're, we're kinda working for them right now, uh, but the timeline is as soon as they tell us to sign, we're good to go.
I'm probably gonna know the length of the contract. It started out at twenty years. Is it still twenty?
So my understand, that actually changed today.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, that changed today. I think we're now at a forty-year contract.
Oh.
Well...
Oh, wow.
Okay, so how old is your oldest school?
Nine.
Okay, so you're probably gonna be it in forty years from now. So you're right, that's a long time. But in the life of a school building, whether it's a ten-year, a twenty-year, or a forty-year contract, it, it doesn't really make much of a difference as far as this board is concerned. The, the one wrinkle is that as long as it's under bond, it can't be transferred. So what that means is until the bond is paid, the county doesn't have the authority to purchase it. And they put it into the county's name. And until that happens, it can't be, become school board property. Now, that said, the county can still dedicate it to the school board for use, which is what I anticipate they're gonna do. Because that gives us the ability to go out and cover the insurance for it.
Did, from the, um, item eleven under the town's responsibility, and I don't remember if this was in the original interlocal agreement or not, but it has to do with the exterior maintenance of the facility.
Correct.
And I, I think that they, and I don't know if this has changed, but the town will be responsible for all the exterior maintenance of the Jonesboro school and the athletic facility in the whole.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The one thing that's not in there, in, in any of the agreements that we, uh, Mr. Wheeler and I realized we're gonna have to work on at some point, is we're gonna need to draw a property line between the facilities, the recreation facilities and the school for security purposes. But the truth is, we can't do that now because we don't know for sure where the building is gonna be. Um, so that's something that, that is to be done, but it will be done later. Um, yeah, that, that, that little detail is, is waiting on other, on other parts to move.
Well, you said that you hit the nail on the head of security. My personal feelings is the outs, the, the ball fields and all that needs its own entrance, in my opinion. It's on entrance, and the school needs its own entrance. See what I'm saying? 'Cause I don't want anybody being able to go to the ball fields, you know? If they wanna do the ball fields, let them be able to go to the ball fields and that's it. Not come in the school entrance and then come down to the ball fields because I think it's a security.
Well, and, and some of it will depend on, you know, you can, you can imagine a shared drive conceivably, but at some point, you're going onto the school, school property. So, so we under, I know exactly what you're saying, and, and I've, I've dealt with this before. Mr. Wheeler understands our concerns. And frankly, the city, the city, the, the town really gets this because if we don't have that line of demarcation between ours and theirs, then that means they have to get all of their employees who work on that place, all their contractors, background checked. And, and that right there is what's gonna drive them to be sure that there's a good, clear line of demarcation. So your point's well taken, and we're already thinking about that.
Any others?
Folks, this is, this is, this has been a, one of these, these times where I think we're done, and then the target moves. Um, but it's been a lot of fun, honestly, to work on this and, and to do something that I think is gonna benefit a lot of people. Um, I really think that y'all are to be commended for an innovative solution to a problem that's been dogging y'all for a good, long time. I, I really do think that y'all done a, a really good job cultivating the goodwill of, of two governmental entities who partnered with y'all. So I think, I think y'all really deserve a big hand for that. So thanks for letting me work on it.
And I wanna thank you two for all you've done representing us. I know you've put in a lot of...
Mr. Wheeler and I have become very close friends.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Our wives are mad at us.
Thank you.
I wanna say it too. I know Mr. Wheeler spoke at the last commission meeting about how many times y'all were late and I still working on things. I just appreciate your credibility, working on this problem.
Well, that's, it, on one hand, it's my job, but on the other hand, you know, it, it's, it's worthwhile to do something for good people, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, we have to go into executive session, so I'm gonna adjourn for our long
I'll bring this back into order. Uh, Mr. Bennett, will you please come up and ask what you may ask for?
Which item are we on, Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry.
You start with item one and go to item two and then item three.
Joint Privilege Agreement.
Joint Privilege Agreement.
So, Mr. Chairman, on the Joint Privilege Agreement, I would recommend the board approve that and authorize uh, the Chairman and me to sign on behalf of the Board of Education.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
I have a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Ms. Stellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Flaner.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Fannin.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Danger.
Aha.
Mr. Meredith.
Yes.
Mr. Irvin.
Uh, second, Mr. Chairman, you'll find on your agenda an item regarding back pay. Uh, as you are aware, there has been a lawsuit pending for some time between WCEA and the Board of Education related to a glitch in the salary schedule. At this point in time, we've identified that glitch to be fifty thousand, uh, seven hundred and ninety dollars. It's my recommendation that you authorize Mr. Hale to pay that either to WCEA or into the registry of the court as we determine best appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval. I have a second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Ms. Stellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Flaner.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Caden.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Danger.
Aha.
Mr. Meredith.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Aha.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Uh... Review of Realtor RFQ.
Okay, you want me to...
Yeah, Mr. Flaner, you could discuss that.
Uh, you have in drop box and also may go ahead and hand out some harsh copies of the single proposal the board received, uh, for the, uh, for services of a professional realtor for the sale of Boons Creek Music School. We did attempt to contact Mr. Sangid.
Sangid. Sangid.
Sangid, uh, to be with us tonight. I did invite everybody in here. I guess he's not here. Dr. Kinnon attempted multiple times. So, what you have before you is all that you have. There is the proposal.
And, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, and this was, you'd called Nitar, right? To base up the information that we were wanting people to go out there and look at the... And send in RFQ, right? Or you all sent RFQ out and you wanted them to bid?
We, we sent it to several individuals' companies and we also put it in the newspaper. Uh, we advertised a, uh, it's not a bidders meeting, but a realtor's meeting.
And nobody...
Nobody showed up and on the day of the opening, this is the one document that was provided. And we had, I don't, no, we did have some phone calls, but I don't have a list who called. This is what you got.
Excuse me?
So, Mr. Chairman, is this just for review or are you expecting action from it? I guess, in my opinion, I'm asking for the board's opinion. What do you all think? But I, I'd kinda like to review it.
I'd like to review it and come back to this and, Mr. Flaner, you said something about an organization, uh, that you can send it to.
Well, that's where I think you'd send it to was Nitar, correct?
I don't know.
Okay.
She was still out of pocket and she could answer that off the top of her head. I don't know.
Could we ask, I mean, this, no matter what we do, this is the only one we're gonna be able to look at 'cause that window is closed, correct? Could we open the window? Would it be appropriate to open the window again for another fifteen days and let a next meeting go over that? Would that be inappropriate?
Open the, the window for what purpose?
For others to, that may wanna bid this or at least look at it.
Is it the board's desire then that we re-advertise and...
I, I, I just hate to make a decision for one, you know, only one qualified. I mean, we know there's more than one qualified realtor out there in commercial real estate. I don't know how they didn't get, you know what I'm saying? They may not be interested. I don't, I don't know. Um, but I... This is a big deal when we do sell this.
We're certainly gonna do what the board wishes us to do.
I'd like to see it. I, I don't feel comfortable with just one turned in, but I'd also like clarification whether Nitar, the organization you were talking about, of all the realtors, if... This isn't our money. This isn't our building. It's the county's and I'd like for us to be diligent with it, but...
No, it's our building.
It's our building. It's our money. We're representatives of the, the people that own the building. The county, the taxpayers, the, the residents own this building in Washington County and I wanna make sure we're doing due diligence by this.
Well, did we not do due diligence when we did everything Dr. Flaner just said? And if this is the only company that felt the need to, uh, put in their request or bid or whatever you would call it, then, uh, I think we've done due diligence. Uh, why aren't we taking this one? What's, I don't understand. Maybe I'm missing something.
Well, first of all, I mean, I don't see anything in here for us to sign. So, there's no agreement here to act on. I mean, what they, what they've done is they, they've recommended a sale price of two million dollars and a five percent broker fee. So, I mean, that's the only thing. I mean, if you wanna, I guess if we wanna make a motion for, to proceed with engaging the brokers to market and sell the building, then that's what you would be doing. But I mean, there's not an agreement here. This is just...
I realize that, but this is a public record now. Everybody knows what they're doing.
Right.
And so, somebody's gonna come in lower now and you've just unduly
Right.
done them. I mean, it's...
True. At, at least like another month or a year.
Has everybody agreed on two million dollars? I haven't remembered any agreement on what we wanna ask for it.
I know. They're just saying that's what they think it's worth.
Well, that's...
I mean, it's said anything.
Yeah. So, our appraisal was what?
One six.
One point seven.
One point seven? So...
So, they suggest a asking price of two million? Yeah, 'cause one million, seven hundred and seventy thousand would be appraisal from Rex Garrison was.
Well, I mean, you know, there's Sunday's paper. Everybody's seen, was it Sunday's paper? Where the one city commissioner wants to trade...
State board member.
Nah, he's a city commissioner.
Oh, he's a city commissioner. He wants to trade for the... Keyfoss Farm, so, you know, that's...
But the Keyfoss Farm's not worth two million dollars.
Not.
We're not anywhere near that.
So...
Well, but entirely, the other thing is, is it doesn't, you know, this doesn't say what marketing expenses are our responsibility and which ones are theirs. I mean, I, you know, if we, if we wanna use Joe and Brian, I think that's, you know, they do good work. But, you know, I'd wanna act on an actual agreement. You know, it specifies what they are going to do because this doesn't, this doesn't provide that.
Where you have to set a, a, uh, call board meeting, would you all be considered having Mr. Wilson and them come and speak to the board on what Mr. Meredith's agreements, what, what you're talking about?
I mean, how, how are they gonna, you know, get this thing out there and, you know, what cost? You know, do we have any other cost other than the commission? I don't know.
The marketing plan's here. On page three. Tells how their, their marketing and sales approach would be, because it's what was asked for.
Right, but do we assume that there's no other cost that's...
And, and that's not in here, but I was just looking on what they had to have.
Normally, there wouldn't be any.
And it says to be scheduled, provide a detailed breakdown of these...
I mean, we, if we've done this due diligence and we've got it, we've got it out there and this is the only entity that's come back to you, that, I mean, that happens to us a lot. We're still, I mean, times when we go out there and solicit, you know, bids for cars or whatever and we only get one or two bidder, so...
Well, I think, well, I don't know how you would do this, but being a licensed agent, what I would do is have them prepare the agreement and then us go over that and vote on that after they send us an agreement with all those, you know? 'Cause they don't have the details. They don't have everything. This is good, though. I mean, this is...
Do it. Let the board attorney do it also. It would be good if he could come and answer some questions if you all...
I want to have him, I want him to come in here and put an interview in for us, so I make, I guess I can make a motion.
Entertaining.
I entertain a motion that, that we bring broker systems into the, to the board and speak to us. Do I have that motion?
Yes.
I know, I need a second.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I was under, I, if you're gonna do that, I thought it was gonna go through facilities and through budget and then come back to the board with their recommendation. So, this is, is this basically what's happened here? They didn't, none of them, I guess, I was at both meetings, so that didn't happen just because it was more correct? Okay.
I just wanted to come before, I want the full board to, to see it, to hear it. So, if you, if it goes through committees, then, you know, I want the full board. Uh, roll call vote on this, please, Jennifer?
What do we vote on?
To bring broker syst, broker, whatever they're called, into the full board. Schedule them, this should either during a call meeting or...
Can we not, can we not bring it to, can we not bring them to facilities and we can all be here? We just, I mean, that's just a long time for the public to...
Well, that's why, that's why I say we'll do it during the call board meeting. I have a motion and a second on the...
Understand.
And so, and I've called for the vote. So, vote the way you feel like you need to vote. Jennifer, please read.
Mr. Flaner.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Fannin.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Danger.
Aha.
Mr. Meredith.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Ms. Stellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Irvin.
Aha.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I guess I'm still fuzzy on this, uh, sales price recommendation. The, the appraisal we got was one point eight and I thought that was low. And I think for this number of acres and the location it is, I think two million is low. So...
I do.
I guess I, I'm just, I'm just real fuzzy on the, the selling price. I really am. I feel like the property's worth a lot more than that. I've heard it said that this property, the middle school and, uh, uh, the green spaces they refer to in front of the round elementary school, that we could look for somewhere in the neighborhood of eight million for sixteen lots across through there. For sixteen lots across through there, five hundred thousand dollars apiece, that's eight million dollars. And I don't know what the traffic count is here compared to there. I just, I think two million dollars on it's low, it really is. I may be the only one around this table to think that.
I agree too.
I, I, that's why I want to have a full board discussion with the realtor, so...
I don't know where we go to get another appraisal. When we transferred the McKenney property to the city of Jonesboro, there were three appraisals done. They did one, we did one, and somehow we arrived at an independent third company to do an appraisal. And all three of them valued the land and then deducted the cost to remove the building. And minus that cost of destroying the, the building and moving it off, and that's how they arrived at the price. And I'm sure that's probably what they did on this as well. I just, I wish there was some other way we could, we could get another appraisal to see if we're as close as we think we are.
How much we spent on the appraisal?
Forty-five hundred dollars.
There's all kinds of commercial appraisers.
Well, now, you're in the real estate business, do you agree with what I'm saying at all?
Oh, yeah, I don't disagree. I'm just saying, I guess I'll get this paper and other appraisals, don't I? The, the, I mean...
What it's worth has got a lot to do with what the guy buying it is going to do with it.
Yeah.
So, that's a major factor in our, well, in my opinion.
We can price it at three million and if we don't get a buyer, it don't matter, but... Thing about it is whoever buys it's gonna get an appraisal and they're not gonna pay more than it appraises. So, right now, you're probably at one point seven whatever, so...
Because that's a matter of public record now, isn't it?
It has to be, thirty-five, forty, ten hours.
I, I mean, so... But, I don't know, I mean, I don't know, it ain't mine, I mean, it ain't mine.
Well, it is. It belongs to the board, so it is ours.
I, well, I mean, it ain't mine per, it's ours, but I, I don't know if I would spend another thirty-five hundred dollar appraisal or not. I mean, if it came in at two million, I guess, let's say we did it again and it came in at two million and we listed it for two point five, and then whoever's buying it gets an appraisal and still on a price for more than two million.
I don't know, I mean...
What do you think, you're in real estate?
I think it'd be ridiculous to pay another, another appraiser because it's not like ever built, you know, we got a bunch of schools sitting out there for sale.
To compare it to.
To compare it to. I mean, if you really wanna know what it's worth...
How many acres is that?
Fourteen.
So, if it's fourteen acres and brought a hundred thousand dollars an acre, how much is that?
Fourteen.
It ain't worth no hundred thousand dollars an acre. I mean, and the building's gonna get tore down, that's gonna be a real burden to somebody. I mean, I, I don't, I personally don't, I'd say one point seven is generous, really.
You sure it's fourteen?
I thought it was...
Well, then, then this Jonesboro property's overinflated, isn't it?
Very much so, I agree. What you threw out there a minute ago, very much so.
Well, I mean, there's all kinds of, you know what I mean?
You're right up there, Tommy.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know what Pals or GoTang paid for it.
Well, those, those properties probably was three, I'd say Pals probably paid three fifty, four hundred for that little lot. But I mean, if you, but here's the thing, you could cut all those Jonesboro lots up and they might bring three or four hundred thousand. Mark sold O'Reilly's, I think, for five hundred thousand for that little lot down there if we got a buyer. And how many years will it take to sell off those individual properties? I don't think there's near as much road frontage on Boons Creek, it's a good piece of property. But, I mean, there's so much land out there already for a hundred thousand acre that, you know, a lot would be two fifty to three fifty an acre. So, I mean, every, I think every, every case is different, but I think when you're buying total acreage like that, you've just gotta look at it as how many acres it is 'cause I don't think that building's gonna be, I don't think anybody wants that building.
I'd say twelve acres.
Most old schools I've seen, it's all are turned into storage, indoor storage and stuff like that, so...
Twelve acres.
Six hundred and sixty-eight feet of road frontage.
Oh, we got lots to go to the schedule and move on.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please, Jennifer. Didn't we vote on that?
Then we went to the...
All right, yeah, that's right, we did, sorry. So, I asked... Uh, request to address the board. Done that. Hey, we're on the back page. Committee reports, athletics.
Whoever the chairman is, an athlete.
The, uh, athletics committee met earlier in the week, it was put in your drop box. Hopefully everyone's had time to read that. I move for approval of the report. Thank you.
All those in favor of the report, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right. We got, uh, no recommendations coming out of the committee. If anybody has any questions, I'll do what I can to... Et cetera.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ganger. Bid review. I handed out the report at the beginning of the meeting, has everyone had a chance to read it or do I need to go over it?
I didn't get it.
Here you go. Do I need to read it or... I'll go ahead and read it. The bid review committee met November seventh at five P.M. in the boardroom of the central office. Those present were Chairman David Hammond and Jason Day. Also present were Director William Flannery and Jared Adams. Mr. Hammond called the meeting to order, there was a lack of quorum. However, the committee elected to have discussion regarding propane and diesel buses. Dr. Adams said that a grant through Bluebird Bus Company, there was a one percent, point one percent, discount to make it eligible to cover thirty, oh, I'm sorry, point one percent NOx to make it eligible to cover thirty-five percent of the cost of a propane bus. Dr. Adams gave comparison of the maintenance on propane bus and diesel bus as well as the cost savings. Mr. Hammond asked transportation supervisor Tony Roberts his recommendation. Mr. Roberts said he recommends purchase of the propane buses. Mr. Hammond asked about the safety of having propane buses, it was answered the propane specifications, so they are just as safe as the diesel buses. Dr. Adams also shared there's an opportunity for a rebate equalling twenty thousand dollars for every bus system, for every bus the system scraps. He said the rebate, rebate is done by lottery. Put this report in the form of a motion. I have a second.
Second.
On the report.
All of, all those in favor of the report, please say aye.
Uh.
Did y'all get a copy of the bids, it should've been in your lot lot?
There was a typo on those bid reviews, um, so I have, uh, updated copies, I know Mr. Hammond has one. Think I have enough copies by then?
We can share it up.
Okay.
Really, the committee can make no recommendations because we didn't have a quorum, but with the discussion, it seems like that purchasing the propane buses, the five, would be a solid recommendation after talking to Dr. Adams and Mr. Roberts from the bus garage. Especially with the grant.
So, we're about five, you said? And this already budgeted, right?
County commission has always set aside money for us to buy buses.
We have to request it, if I remember correctly, Mr. Meredith, is that right?
It is part of the cap, well, that's the plan, yes.
Well, not the buses already, no, I'm not thinking about that. No, there's no resolution.
We have to ask them each year.
You gotta, you gotta go by, you gotta...
You gotta knock on that door every single year we bound.
And we, how many do we have that we're getting ready to turn in? I don't, I think it was last month you reported to Aegis. Are there some that are getting ready to pay for it?
Right, that's, we're asking for five buses because five have got to come off the road. So, again, with that grant that this McKenney wrote, uh, if we get the full thirty-five percent, it's thirty-two thousand dollars per bus that will get rebated back to us, actually back to the county.
Why is one a twenty-five percent rebate and the other one's potential...
That's why it was important that, that Mr. Hammond read that into the report. The, the Thomas built propane buses have a point one-three, um, nitrous, nitrous oxide output and that puts them, the cutoff is point one, so they're point one-three, so they qualify for twenty-five percent. The Bluebird bus is point one, which makes, helps them qualify for the point, for the thirty-five percent. So, there's a big, there's a big difference apparently between those and that's why we decided, even though the Bluebird bus is, is about, uh, twelve hundred dollars more than the, than the Thomas, we save more money because we get ten percent more potentially from the grant.
How many propane buses are local that we have around here?
The largest fleet in the states in Kingsville.
Yeah.
Of propane buses?
Propane vehicles period. Their whole fleet, I believe, wide enough.
Well, the Thomas is an eight point eight liter, which is about... What is it, probably, uh... Five hundred cubic inch, something like that. And the other one's a Ford V-ten, which that's a seven, about a seven three. And if we don't get the rebate, we'll be paying more at the bus stop.
That is correct.
But isn't there an estimated savings of seven or eight thousand dollars a year on each individual year of operation?
It's, uh, it's close to that, yes, sir, over the span of fifteen years, that's a great deal of money. And what, what, if we do not get the rebate, um, or the, the grant into that amount, that would be, uh, an argument that I feel we would be making to the county commission while we'd be asking for more money on the front end for five buses because the lifetime of bus, we would actually save the, the county money. I think that's a, a very compelling argument to make.
Seven, seven thousand a year is a close estimate.
It's, it's, it depends how far the bus drives, uh, on a, on a yearly basis. You know, our plan is to have those buses run at Jonesboro, they might go from Jonesboro and, and, and Grandview to keep them as, as close to the bus garage as possible because that's where the, the fueling station would be. But it is about, depending on the bus, somewhere between five, six thousand dollars a year that we'd save potentially on, on not only gas or, and, uh, the diesel fuel, but also in the, the wear and tear and the maintenance of the, of vehicle. We have a devil of a time with the diesel engines.
Okay. But what is the range on a diesel that we have today compared to what the range of this would be? I'm thinking fuel.
It's very comparable. I mean, I don't have the exact numbers, but we've looked at that, it's in the grant, uh, that Tuan wrote. It's, it's very comparable.
Is there potential, the grant, is it for five buses or is there potential we get one bus? The grant for one, or is it...
We're asking for five buses and that's, and that's what, that's what the grant...
So, it'll be for five or it'll be for none?
That's correct. And, and, you know, from what Ms. McKenney has told us, you know, there's a possibility that, that they may only fund thirty percent of, of the, of the cost. Uh, it's, it's kinda dependent on, uh, how many different systems have, have asked for this specific pot of money. Now, I know she's been in close contact with the gentleman who's overseeing the grant and while there's, uh, many school systems in the state, many of them went through the VW grant that we got the electric bus, a lot of them went, instead of asking for electric, they went and asked for propane. So, a lot of them are already, are already at max capacity. You're not getting more buses, you, you trade more. You destroy it, you cut up the diesel and you get a propane. So, not everybody has, it's not like everybody needs a hundred new buses because they don't qualify. The, the engines actually have to be two thousand six or older to qualify. For the VW grant, for this grant that Tuan wrote and for that, uh, that rebate program, they have to be two thousand six or older.
Would you, Mr. Chairman, would you explain this last item on the report about the twenty thousand for every bus the system scraps?
Do you wanna take action on the propane five first, or...
Well, let me, I've, I've got a question. I've got a question.
Do you want me to explain that first or...
Yeah, explain Phillips, what he just asked.
Through this whole VW settlement, that they've came up different, the EPA has come up at a federal level with different mechanisms to, to give money to municipalities, to school systems. So, we've qualified for the VW grant to get the electric school bus. We've got a grant written now to try to qualify for propane buses. Last couple of weeks ago, I got an email saying that because we qualified for the electric bus, we also can qualify for the twenty, twenty thousand dollar rebate program. It's a lottery system, so I sent in the paperwork and basically what we're, what we're asking for is if we scrap so many buses, they'll give us twenty thousand dollars for each bus that we buy that's propane. So, and that was part of the, the conversation that we kinda need to have because if we get the rebate, we won't know until January, mid-January is when they're gonna give the list who gets the rebate. If we get the rebate, we need to buy more buses. Right now, we need five to put on the road in August. Next year, we'll need seven to put on the road in August of twenty twenty-one. But if we buy them this year, even though we can hold on to them, that their, their longevity is based on when they start driving, not when we buy them. So, if we hold on to seven new buses for a whole year, then put them on the road in August twenty twenty-one, we can save potentially a hundred and forty thousand dollars because we need seven buses. Next year.
You, the way I understood, and we got in this problem three or four years ago, when we took ownership of the bus, that's when the year started.
That's what I thought as well, but that is not the case.
That's what this board was told.
I agree, I agree with you and, um, that's why some of the numbers, when we started digging into it, they don't, they didn't actually jive together. Uh, that was a mistake for people that were doing this before me. So, you know, when we figured it out, um, there is a difference and I, and what really made me understand is applying for these grants. It's not the year the engine was made, it's not the year the bus was built, it's not the year that you take possession of it, it's the year that it starts driving. So...
If we're going to propane, what's the cost of creating the fueling station?
That's what's kind of exciting about this, uh, because we have been in just preliminary discussions with people, because you know they come out of the woodwork when they find out you're gonna, you know, use this new technology. I know for a fact that we have at least one propane company that is willing to do the entire infrastructure on their cost, as long as we would enter into some type of agreement for a two or three-year period that we would buy all of our propane strictly from them. So, I mean, we would bid that out, but there's potential there that we, there'd be no cost to us to actually build it just to buy the gas.
So, that would take us into a situation where we could probably also buy propane vans or cars if we wanted to.
Yes, sir.
And mowing equipment.
And we've researched into the actual fueling station itself, it's, uh, it's easy to do, it's safe, uh, it's like filling up a car with the gasoline. You pull the bus in, you stick the, the nozzle in there and there's a, there's a coupling to it that just kinda suctions on to the, to the, to the input of the bus and you pump it full of propane and it shuts itself off when it's full. You just disconnect it, no cords like they, like when somebody comes out and fills up your propane and take it home and they have all that, it's not like that. It's just, it looks like a gas, a gas thing.
I wanna say something and, and take it for what it's worth. A gas... A gas motor will not last as long as a diesel motor will. We, it's the same thing. When we get ready to sell this thing, I'm afraid it won't bring nothing.
Well, they don't bring nothing anyway.
Well, I, I understand that, but they will part out a lot more than what this propane is. Now, I, we're sitting here looking at, what'd you say, thirty-nine hundred dollars?
When I left the surplus business, we sold nearly fifty buses and averaged around twenty-six hundred.
Well, I'm sorry, but I, I feel, Philip?
Well, it's going to save us, or?
It's not seventy-six. It's not, I promise you. I bet you, in the next three or four years, you're going to see, that's just my opinion, so.
Based on the research?
I'm going to vote the way I feel like I need to vote.
No, I, I, I happen to agree with Keith. I, I would like for somebody to come and talk to us with, not the salesperson, because I'm sure he'd be willing to sell us one, but they're, I, they just, I'm just not a big buyer. I made these electric cars to be in business for a while, but we sure ain't seen them all on the road. There's a reason why, it's not because they're cheaper, I, in my opinion. But now, that's what, there's nine up here, so you don't have many different opinions.
There's one more thing. Now, this was talked about last month, and I didn't want to make no kind of decision on this until I went to Nashville and spoke, or speak to the bus people themselves.
And I don't mean to put any pressure on the board, uh, but for us to get the grant, it has to be in very soon. And to get the grant, we have to be, we have to have that motion to, to buy the buses.
Well, if we buy five propane buses, we're not committing to buying every bus now propane.
Well, we're fixing to buy, and if, and if we don't get the grant, then we just went, spent a lot more money.
Well, I'm just saying, is, uh, I don't know how I feel on it, but I'm okay with trying them out. You know, I don't want, I don't think we're sitting here saying every bus we buy from here on out is now going to be propane. But I think it'd be, you know, wise of this board to put some on the road. Let's see if, if there's cost savings there, let's see how they run, let's see what they do. And, you know, I don't, if you're asking me to vote from here on out it's going to be propane, no, I don't want to do that. But I got no problem with trying this.
Well, and I think, again, it's important to note that the guy who's going to work on the buses, who's going to drive the buses, who spends his entire day in that bus garage, and I'm not, he's not here to speak for him, but we've had a thousand conversations, he is a thousand percent for buying the propane buses. If he could get rid of every diesel bus in that garage, he'd do it. Because they expend their time fixing diesel engines, over and over and over. Um, I, I showed a report, uh, some, some numbers earlier today. Uh, for the month, for about a four-week period, the middle of, um, September to the middle of October, on probably eight different buses, we spent, could have potentially spent almost four thousand dollars just to, to fix the repairs. There was about a fifteen-hundred dollar thing with one of our buses that was still covered under warranty. And that's not an old bus, it's a newer bus, so it was still covered under warranty, that the, the company actually fixed. But other than that, we're on the, we're on the, we're on the list that, you know, that's on us to have to pay for it. And that's just the stuff, that list was things that we have to fix because it's a diesel, not because it's a school bus. And those are things that we would not have to repair because the propane bus doesn't have those parts.
Mr. Chairman, I understand your all's concerns, I have some too, but I make a motion that we go ahead with the five buses, not take any action on the seven for next year, because you have till December. And that gives us some time to meet with the bus representatives in Nashville. And if you want to have somebody from, I mean, Kingsport, transfers, or maintenance garage come speak.
Is my timer up?
You could do that, but I make a motion we go ahead and do the five buses through the screen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that motion.
With Bluebird, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote please.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
No ma'am.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangler?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
No ma'am.
That's all we have.
I ask you a quick, quick question for dead ladies.
I'm coming back one more time, so.
Electric bus, where we at on that?
We have the specs set up, it's a very arduous process because of how we're, how the grant is, is made. We had to get our bid specifications and how we're going to bid it, and I have to send it to Nashville for them to approve the process. They'll send it back to me and say, you can do it this way, and then we'll send it out for bid. And then, once we get the bid, I have to send it back to them so they can approve the bid, and then we'll move forward. My hope is, uh, that we have it, um, out to bid probably, hopefully before Thanksgiving, and then get that back, and there, there are people that contact me at least, uh, every two or three days, sending emails, hey, where are you at? Uh, these companies are wanting to sell us that bus. I mean, it's a four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollar sale for, uh, one thing, so they're, they're, they're chomping at the bit, uh, to, to bid for it. So, you know, the goal is to have it on the road August of twenty-twenty, so.
Good deal. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Cost Cutting Committee.
Okay. Did ever, I guess everybody got a copy of that in their drop box? I guess two things, we need to go over Dr. Flannery, help me out here on this. The, uh, on a mo-, I got, I'll just read this one, it says, "On a motion by Mr. Patrick and a second by Dr. Flannery, committee unanimously approved to further review the enterprise program to be moved to the full board for consideration."
I need a second on the report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Now.
Big round of applause. Okay, now do I need to repeat that?
No.
Okay. So, we got, what, what questions, observations, thoughts, how do we move that?
You talking about Enterprise?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment on this if I may. I don't understand why Dr. Flannery cannot, if he wants to go with Enterprise for his employees to travel more than a hundred miles and use the Enterprise program. I guess I'm a little fuzzy why we would have to take action, he should be able to do that on his own through procedure.
It'll be a contract design, and I can't do that without your approval.
Well, the last time we talked about doing that, we seemed to have more opinions against it than we did for it. This came up two years ago, three years ago? We currently pay mileage based on county and state guidelines for, per deal and for mileage. And I, I don't remember a lot of the specifics, but I remember, I thought we were going to Nashville, and I was planning on staying two days extra. We rent a car, how do we do that? I certainly wouldn't want the system to pay for me having to rent a car for two extra days when I'm not on school business or, or school board business.
I'd take their own car for the money.
Well, I think if the director, I, I'd like to see him, if he wants this program, I'd like to see him be able to put it into procedure. And if we need to sign a contract for him, then we can approve the contract for him and his employees.
I think, from the Cost Cutting Committee, we've talked about it in depth. I think, you know, I realize y'all didn't like it before, but it does, we, we've investigated that it does save the board money. So, I mean, I think we ought to vote on it. If nobody wants to do it, we don't do it.
Mr. Chairman.
It's very simple.
Don't we already have, like, an agreement with them, if somebody from the school system rents a car, it's a discount?
When I rent from them, it's just me personally, I don't have any kind of renting, other than my own private account.
I thought that he, when the representative came, came.
We, we try to do that, and contact the master, know we have an account, well, no, you don't. And, but they, they rented to us, and a lot of people rent from them, but we don't have a Washington County account. Let me throw out a number, too, if, if you went to Nashville for a week, seven days in a full-size car, it costs the county a hundred and seventy-five dollars. In our current forty-seven cents a mile, if you went down and back in two days, it would cost the county two-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars.
But is that just a rental of the car? That's not including the gas?
Well, you buy the gas, you, you bring it back with whatever it had in it, so, and if you had to buy thirty dollars' worth of fuel, you just turn in your receipt again. I went back and forth with the vendor. A down and back trip to Nashville for me, for any of the supervisors, would save the county right at two-hundred dollars every time it happened.
And how many times do you reckon you go down there?
I'd probably go down six times a year.
How many total for you and your employees?
I don't know, y'all, just a bunch of you just got back from Nashville. We've had, uh, every principal and half supervisors in Nashville this week.
So, would you buy, get a vehicle for each one of them to drive down there?
I would hope not, I mean, if, if five people were going to the same thing, I'd hope they give them anything.
But normally, the way it is right now, they all five get mileage, correct?
I mean, why would actually go to a superintendent state council? And, you know, why would many go to a CTE?
Right.
So, you know, we're, we're burning up the road. But we add it, this would have to be outside a radius of a hundred-and-twenty-five miles because North would make any sense.
If you were to drive down there, if you didn't get a rental car, or, you know, you entered into this agreement, you didn't take, and you want to take your own, you wouldn't get paid mileage, correct?
Well, I'd be up the school board. If you don't do anything, I would hope that you would allow me to at least enter into an optional agreement with Enterprise where those of us that wanted to save the county money could. I always rent. What's the mileage rate? Forty-seven cents?
Forty-seven cents.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question, and I'm glad, uh, Mr. Bennett's here, maybe he could shed some light on this. When, uh, when I worked for Valleydale, uh, they require, when I drove my own car, they required me to have a five-hundred-thousand-dollar liability insurance for my car if I were on company business and I had an accident. Then my insurance had to cover the first five-hundred thousand, and the company backed up after that.
Enterprise will give you a damage waiver, uh, whereas if you clean out a ditch with it, you call them, they bring you a new car, you keep driving, and you get one million dollars in liability coverage from the time you get in the car, the time you get out.
So, what if you have an accident and there's a personal injury on the other car and it's their fault?
You got a million dollars in liability coverage.
You have a comment on that? And that's part of the thirty dollars a day?
That's going to protect your employees more than, than what you have right now because you're, because right now, your employees are going to have minimum limits, even if they're driving on school board business. I mean, well, let's assume you have someone who has minimum limits, we don't, we don't know that. But, but if you're driving on school board business and you're in a car accident, it's very unlikely that GTLA is going to kick in and protect your employee if you're just going to Nashville. So, honestly, what you're talking about here is going to be, um, if you're going to protect your employees against any kind of claim because you've got the company's insurance that you've essentially rented while you've got the car. That's the only comment I have. I mean, it's, people don't think about this, but, but the GTLA, the state liability statute, it really provides for very minimal coverage once you're off school board property. It doesn't leave you hanging naked, but it's, it's not a lot of coverage. I hadn't really thought about it from your, from your perspective about renting a car, but really, you've, you've extended some protection to your employees that they don't already have. It's true.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, so you're talking about setting a contract up with them to get a discount at Enterprise, but do you have to sign that contract?
I believe there has to be, there has to be something in writing.
Okay, so you're going to give gas, you're going to give the money to the person for the gas unless?
You pick up the car, it's full of gas, and the way Enterprise works, you bring it back for it. And if you had to buy gas on the road, you fill out a voucher for reimbursement for that fuel.
But they already give us a discount.
Who does?
Enterprise.
I'm not following.
You have to return it, you can't return empty.
No, but we already have an account through them. No, I got the account number right here.
Any vehicle returned short on fuel is charged a quarter a gallon above bulk price, is what it says.
No, but I'm saying, we have, we have an understanding with Enterprise that if you're going on school business, whether it's school board, teacher, or whatever, they give you a discount or a grade, a heavily discounted grade, depending on the vehicle you pick.
On the rental way?
On the rental way.
Is it the same as what they would, like, I mean, I don't know?
Depends on the car you pick.
I'm going to have to beg ignorance. And another thing, too, I'm not sure I can independently mandate that because board policy guarantees a mileage on professional traffic.
So, we would have to?
It's going to have to be board action, or just for you. I mean, if, if, I'm not, this is not a hill I'm willing to dial, folks. But if you're interested in saving costs, we can, we can save thousands.
I make a motion that we go into agreement with Enterprise, let's try to see.
I'll have my hand up, I'd like to ask the question.
Okay, go ahead.
Is this for employees, or does this include the board?
It's up to you.
Well, I'd like to make it for employees, let's see how they work out, and then see what, is that what we're?
I'm assuming it's for employees.
They're all employees. That's where the bulk of business, the savings would be. If it saves a hundred dollars apiece, and we made two trips to Nashville, which we don't, not all of us, that's, that's nine hundred dollars for each trip. If we went twice a year, which we don't, which we don't. We'd be lucky if all nine guys.
Yes, we do.
Next week, but typically, there's only three or four going February.
Right.
So, you've actually, you're talking about the rates per car, like. See, I know this because I had to call you last year on my way to Nashville. I had a, something fly over and hit my front wheel and warped it, so I had to take it into Lincoln dealership. So, when I go to Enterprise, when they take me over there, they ask where I was going, I told them. They pull up this account number under Washington County Department of Education, and I got a fully loaded Toyota Camry for like twenty-four dollars a day. Not the, not the Toyota Corolla, not this compact car. And I think I called you, and I got the account number, if you want to look it up, this was last November.
That would be the answer with the way they drive you?
So, so if we send somebody to Nashville for three days, that's ninety dollars, right, three times thirty. If we pay them for mileage to go down there and back, that's two-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars. I mean, yeah, why are we not? I seconded his motion, so.
But she made it, did you make an amendment? Well, yes, I would like to see it for, um, school employees and just see how that works out, you know.
I think, I think it is, it is for employees. I mean, this, this, this is for his employees, I don't think this applies.
For us?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, yeah.
So, now we have to?
Get back, go through policy.
So, we're making a motion to send this to policy, or we're making a motion to do it?
I'm making a motion to do it.
I'll make it.
We're going to save money, we're serious about saving money. I thought that, you know, that's what the Cost Cutting Committee was about, so.
Vote on it.
We can enter into the agreement, we change the policy, so that's what you're, yeah. Well, would you have to change policy, put in entertainment, go into the agreement, and let's say for some reason, someone's not able to rent a Corolla, for whatever reason, they had surgery or whatever on their leg, and give that board member or that employee the option of using their own vehicle and paying them the standard forty-seven cents?
You could put policy in with, if there were extended any way in circumstances, the director could make a decision.
Well, yeah, if you're going down there for seven days, or, or two weeks. You know, if you're gone for a longer period of time, it may make more sense to pay them for mileage.
Nobody operates for seven days.
I don't know, but I'm just, yeah. I think y'all have the flex, I think the director, I have the flexibility to go one way or the other.
I totally agree.
I have, Mr. Ganger.
Your discussion, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Does this need to get bidded out? Can we just get other car rental places to bid on this and see if we can get lower rates if we're trying to save money or we're just going with one because?
We're just going to try it like the old late buses.
Then we got bids on them?
You got bids on them?
Enterprise owns forty-nine everything.
They own everything else, which is gone.
The people that have the seven companies that you can rent cars from at the airport, they own six of them.
Mr. Chairman.
I think our, maybe the employees, the board members only go to Nashville twice a year. And if they want to take their own vehicle or take their families, or, I think there ought to be the disgrace, or, if they want to rent a car, fine, and have that discounted rate, but I don't know that you want to enter. I mean, Enterprise is already offering a discounted rate with that signed contract.
I'm good with that.
And then, like, if you have a group going down to Nashville and you want to put four in a minivan instead of, if they're going to a conference, that would be your call.
So really, all we have to do is change policies, because we already have an agreement and we...
I don't think we really need to change policy. I think we left up to the director's discretion. Because you've only got to have board members.
That's a wonderful question. I'll need to read it.
Oh, good. I thought you were...
No, I made a note to read it and get it ready for policy.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Read the motion again, please.
All right. Jennifer, do you know the motion? The board member that let Mr. Flannery employees use Enterprise, is that what the motion is?
Which is the guy that made it?
I make a motion that we enter into agreement with Enterprise Rentals for any kind of travel outside a hundred miles.
For school employees.
For school employees. And we'll change, you know, we'll go into policy and doctrine the way we need to.
Everybody get that? Second, everybody's got, you got the second? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Mr. Dellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Flanner.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Sure.
Mr. Ganger.
No.
Mr. Meredith.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
No.
Shall we carry on? Yes. Okay, Dr. Flannery reported that he and Susan Kirian had talked with Southern Educational Strategies as requested by the board. He said the group was highly qualified and continued that they had the expertise, budget, staffing, special education, food services, part of the efficiency study they provide. He said it would require them to take three or four trips to the system, which would be costly, and stated a request for proposal would be required on a unanimous vote. The cost-cutting committee recommend consideration of the efficiency study from the full board.
I guess you found what you come up with, it's good.
Why don't you explain it a little bit to us? It, Dr. Flannery could probably explain, explain a little better, but, you know, when we go into the, the room down there and you go to all those different places and they sign their little card and you talk to them, these guys were down there, I guess, maybe the first year I was there, and they were retired superintendents or, or, they were superintendents at one time, and they created this company, and Dr. Flannery can probably tell you.
Dr. Tim Fike used to be Tipton County Superintendent, Dr. James Mitchell, who has now become the Superintendent, formed a partnership with a former CEO. They work for school systems doing efficiency studies, and they are, they're qualified. I mean, they talk like school people. They're not private industry, they're school people. They did recommend that we release an RFP because the fact that they're in Memphis and there's some travel involved, he thought that there would be firms more locally situated that might do this cheap.
And that's who you found?
Yeah, and I spoke to Tammy Grissom and she highly recommended them because they, you know, they were a part of the, setting up all the, when they split all those in Memphis, they were a part of splitting all those up and helping them get up and running efficiently.
They refused or declined to quota pricing.
Yeah.
So where do we go next?
Attorney Bennett indicated he could put together an RFP with the board.
Memphis, they were a part of splitting all those up and helping them get up and running efficiently.
Yes, successfully. Mixed results.
Some good and some not so good.
It will.
So, yes, I've seen this done quite a bit. The failing tends to be whether the board wants to implement the recommendations. You, you'll, you get recommendations for, as, as a case in point, when, when Chattanooga City Schools went out of business in ninety-five, there were a number of suggestions from efficiency experts that this school needed to close, that school needed to get consolidated, so on and so forth. Well, the thing is, the board had made an investment in community schools. And community schools, like it or not, they're not efficient. They're small, they, they give you that personal touch, but they're more expensive to run than a larger school. It's just, it's just true. So that's where the board in Hamilton County made the decision that as a matter of policy, they wanted a smaller school because it pursued what they wanted. Twenty years later, there was a, there has been a discussion, they should have done that. They should have followed along with what that recommendation was. Other districts, in my opinion, they get the answers that they already know are true. They just want someone to tell them. What, for example, I, I'm familiar with one district where an efficiency expert said you need to update all of your, all of your energy management systems, which they did, but they had already planned on doing that. So it, it really depends on, on what you think your issues are. I, I would bet you, more likely than not, this board already knows what you need to do. So you may get some suggestions that you hadn't thought about, you may get some things moved to the top of the list that maybe you was, were thought a little bit lower. The question is, whatever it is that you get, are you going to be willing to go ahead and do it, number one? And number two, are you going to have the funds to do it? Because more often than not, the recommendations that you get are not revenue neutral for the first however many years. Case in point, one of my clients just spent, I think it was five-hundred-thousand dollars on an efficiency study, and they were told that they need to spend somewhere around the neighborhood of eight billion dollars in facility upgrades. Well, how are you going to do that? You can't. But, but on the other side of the coin, it's, it, it did create a different list of priorities moving forward. So, anyway, you asked me what time it was, I told you about the clock. I've seen it work. All it takes is time and money. My suggestion with an RFQ, which, which I would put together with, heavily with the board member's input, would be, don't just tell us what you need, tell us how you want, how we should go about doing it. Tell us, help us find creative solutions that may be, that may have no cost for the short run. A good, I don't, and I, I'm familiar with this group by reputation, but a good efficiency expert will tell you how to take your current operations and make them more effective without a whole lot of cost involved. So anyway, there we go. I, I've seen it done well, I've seen it done poorly. It depends on the will of the board and whether you've got funds. That's it.
Well, part of my thinking is, and I've, I've heard complaints from years, from county commissioners, these guys are top-heavy. If you merge with Johnson City, you could get rid of half the central office and half their central office. And I don't think that's true. I don't think that's true at all. But if we had something done from an HR standpoint, I mean, let's face it, guys, we've got a seventy-million-dollar budget this year and eighty percent of it is salaries. Eighty percent of it is, am I close, Mr. Hale? Eighty percent of our budget is salaries and benefits?
Yes, salary and benefits, fixed costs, yes.
Okay, so are we top-heavy, are we light? Which are we? In a study like this, not from a financial standpoint, but from simply an operational standpoint, where are we and where do we need to be? They may come back and tell us we're short a bunch of bodies. And, and that's part of the risk, I guess, we take if we do something like this. It could go either way.
Mr. Ganger.
Two years ago or so, when Dr. Jesse Richer was helping this board, he was going to do this stuff for free, and this board really didn't show much concern for that. And now we're going to pay somebody to do it. I got a problem with that.
Well, we paid him.
He was paid through a partnership with Belmont University that we got through TSBA.
But his study was not going to be free. All these professionals he was bringing in were going to be at the rate of a hundred and fifty, two-hundred dollars an hour, okay? So that was not a total program. I beg to differ with you.
Is it going to be cheaper than what we're fixing to do?
I don't know that we're going to do this.
Absolutely.
I don't know that we're going to do this. Mr. Bennett just sort of changed my mind on it.
Mr. Chairman. With the, I mean, can we not, I make a motion that we send out, we have Scott fix us up the RFQ. Let's say, let's find out what it costs. If this gentleman had done it two years ago, was still willing and interested in... No, it wouldn't be that easy if there was a partnership the board had. So I'd like to see, I mean, see what it costs. I'm sorry. I make that in the motion.
I second.
I have a motion and a second.
So what's the motion?
I made a motion to get Scott Bennett to send out an RFQ to see what it costs.
If I may, I don't think I should send out the RFQ.
You'll, you'll make one for us to send out.
If I may, what I'd like to do is I'll draft one for, for the board to review to send out. I'm a big believer in more information being better than less, and you don't know what you don't know. And, and certainly, you can find someone who gives you a great big price tag with a lot of to-dos that doesn't do you any good whatsoever, or you could find somebody who's very practical who can say, this county has, has got these three needs, here's how you address them. I think that, I, I can, I can develop for you an RFQ with your input that you can send out, but I think the, the real issue is going to be for this board to interview the responders and find out which responder is going to address your needs. You're not going to need someone like BNG to do this comprehensive study about facilities forecasting for the next forty years. You don't need that. What you need is somebody who can, who sees your blind spots. So, and that's where we all come in to window through and figure out what can we do better and, and who's going to help us get there. So, yeah, I absolutely can do that, but I don't need to be sending it out.
Everything that everybody's talking about is costing money. And we're fixing to do the Jonesburg project. We're here and now, it's going to go forty years. We're going to go and request, if they come back with a great idea that everybody sits here and supports, and it's going to cost X amount of dollars, and we go and ask for it from the, we're going to get turned down. My opinion, so.
Spin their wheels.
Spin their wheels. Everybody sitting at this table knows what we need to do. Everybody, this nine board member, and then we need to implement it into our director and let him make that happen.
What if they give a cost-cutting suggestion?
If we know what we're doing, why ain't y'all done it? I mean, you've been on board twelve years.
It takes money.
I mean, it ain't really fair for, I'll say, us new members to have to see it and go through what you all did.
You're getting a taste of being a school board member, is what you're getting.
No, what I'm saying is, I don't care what you did or you didn't do four years ago. It didn't work. It ain't working. Maybe you should have spent...
Well, I don't know if it's not working or not. That's a matter, that's your opinion.
How can you say that? How can you sit there and say, we got a ninety-four and a half percent graduation rate? How can you sit there and say it ain't working?
I'm offended by that.
Well, you can't be.
I mean, well said.
I'm the one that's going to...
Is there a motion on the table?
Yes, knock off for the question. You recognize me?
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Can I be, can I be clarified the motion?
Clarify the motion. What is the motion?
Mr. Flannery, Director of RFQ.
To be sent out.
Just for consideration. For our consideration.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Mr. Dellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Flanner.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
No.
Mr. Ganger.
No.
Mr. Meredith.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
No. Motion carries. Next. That concludes our report. Facilities. Mr. Ganger, that's you?
No, it's, that's me.
Oh, okay.
So we move to accept the report as is, is that correct?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the report, please say aye. All those opposed. I assume everybody's read this. One thing I wanted to mention, make sure. Dr. Flannery moved for the playground equipment to be declared a surplus and sold, and a plaque in memory of the student be relocated to the new Beans Creek Elementary. Mr. Ganger seconded it, committee unanimously approved on a voice vote. So do we need to make a motion that we, the board approved that? So that's, okay. I'll put that in form of a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Was there any discussion about earmarking those dollars for the new Beans Creek facility then? On the surplus, on the sale?
I don't know.
Or would they just go back into the...
General fund if they shoot out or what?
I just wonder if you had any discussion.
We didn't. We didn't really assume that it'd bring anything, did we?
No. They're having to pay one student. Yeah. Yeah.
They are, they are, that playground equipment was purchased for the new Beans Creek, but the main...
Installation.
Installation is not being paid for, is that correct?
Correct.
They're raising money for it. They're raising, trying to raise money for it.
So would that money not best be spent by putting that into their account to install that?
It'd be a great amendment.
Okay, well, I'd like to amend his motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the amendment. Roll call vote, please, on the amendment.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Mr. Dellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Flanner.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Ganger. Mr. Meredith.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
All right. Okay. Now.
I want first.
Okay, now on the original motion, which was
Surplus.
Surplus equipment as amended.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Mr. Dellinger.
Yes.
Mr. Flanner.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Flanner.
Yes.
Mr. Ganger. Mr. Meredith.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Urban.
All right. Motion passes. Next. If there's no more questions, that concludes the report. Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met yesterday, but I do not believe it's any drop box, so I will pass around a copy of the report, and since you each have your hands on it, I shall read it to you. As clearly and quickly as I can. Everybody have a copy. Finance Committee met on Wednesday, November sixth, two thousand nineteen, at three-thirty PM at the Department of Education Department of Education Central Office. Those present in the committee are Chairman Philip McLean, committee members Mary Beth Dellinger, and Agent Cannon, Ms. Meredith, Director of Schools, Dr. Flannery, Student Board Member Lakin Jones, and Director of Finance Brad Hale. Also in attendance were Angela Guin, Paul Masters, and Philip Fatt.
Also in attendance were Angela Guin, Paul Masters, and Philip Fattier. The committee considered the general fund financial statement for the month of September two thousand nineteen, and the committee recommends approval. Committee considered federal fund financial statement for the month of September two thousand nineteen, and committee recommends approval. Committee considered entering to an agreement, Frontline Education, to use them as a third-party platform to manage substitute teachers. This should significantly reduce overtime pay that will be incurred after January first, two thousand twenty, due to new regulations from the Department of Labor. Committee recommends approval. The committee considered the request to purchase three vehicles for transportation and maintenance department. These vehicles will be purchased through the state contract and will not be required to go through the bidding process. Will be purchased with available budget funds. Committee recommends approval. Committee considered a request from Grayall Minkers School entering to a one-year copier lease agreement with the option to renew through the state contract. Committee recommends approval. Committee considered an amendment to the director's contract to modify a compensation component to be in compliant with state guidelines. This will have a neutral effect in overall compensation. The committee recommends approval. The committee discussed purchasing two drivers' edge leased vehicles that are coming due in December two thousand nineteen. Purchase price for each vehicle at the end of the lease is thirteen thousand fourteen dollars. Both vehicles are two thousand seventeen Chevrolet Malibu's. Committee recommends approval. Committee considered the request from Dr., Director of Schools, to add an administrative assistant position to the maintenance department. See to attach the description, committee recommends approval. That completes the report, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
I have a second on the report.
Yes, sir, second.
Okay.
Great job.
All those in favor of the report, say aye. All those opposed. Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee considered the general fund financial statement, and we move for approval.
Second.
September two thousand nineteen.
I have a second. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Mr. Dillinger.
Yes.
Mr. Flaner.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Gangers.
Yes.
Mr. Meredith.
Yes.
Mr. Hurd.
Motion passes. Mr. Flan.
Thank you, sir. Committee considered the federal fund financial statement for the month of September two thousand nineteen, and we move for approval.
Second.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Mr. Dillinger.
Yes.
Mr. Flaner.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Gangers.
Uh.
Mr. Meredith.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Hurd.
Motion passes.
Sir, the committee considered entering to an agreement with Frontline Education to use them as a third-party platform. Committee considered entering to an agreement with Frontline Education to use them as a third-party platform to manage substitute teachers. Move for approval.
I'll make a motion, we approve this.
My second. I have a motion and a second. What is the, what is the?
He made the motion, I'm sorry.
I'm asking for the discussion now.
Okay, let me, myself and Mr. Hale make a few statements, and then you can answer the questions. There is a new law going into effect that any of our employees, such as bookkeepers and secretaries, that make less than, less than thirty-five thousand a year. If they're doing work at home, like if a teacher calls and says, "I'm sick, I can't come to work tomorrow", she's gotta get on the phone and start making calls to find a sub for her the next day. So, Mr. Hale did a survey of all these folks and figured out very quickly that in a year's time, it will cost us in excess of sixty-six thousand dollars.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight thousand. This program, Brad, I don't have mine right in front of me. I'll pass this out, I might need you to.
We passed these out at finance, I might need you to share these.
I would have one.
Okay.
Give them one.
Okay. Twenty-three.
So you done a study to find out this will save money?
This should be more than paid for itself over the next year.
Thousand. Over time.
Why would you study to find out something's paying money? That's crazy.
Now, cost is twenty-six thousand the first year, and then the recurring. I keep hearing chatter, can everybody hear? If cost is approximately twenty-six thousand the first year we did this, but that's going against the cost of sixty-six thousand, then the second year, annual recurring fees would be twenty-three thousand seven sixty-eight. This not only will cover substitutes for teachers, it will cover substitutes if the principal requires it for instructional assistants, bus drivers, janitors could even be in place on this, so.
Cafeteria workers.
Cafeteria workers, every one of our departments, everything except Director of Schools, who came crazy. All categories of folks that are under thirty-five thousand a year could be participating in this program to save us money. These folks are at home working, we have to pay them. First reason I am for this program is that those folks, when they go home, they need to be off. They don't need to be sitting on the phone making all these phone calls every night. If you've got any of the questions, I will refer it to Mr. Hale, please.
I got a question. Has anybody, have we as a system ever looked and tried to fix this ourselves as far as? Because I mean, I know there's waitresses and waiters. They go somewhere, you know, they pick up and drop shifts by going on their website there of their business and, you know, add their stuff there if they wanna look for somebody to drop one or to pick one up or something, they do that. Is there not a way that we could do this in-house and look, or have we even done that to see if there's a computer program or something that we can do?
That's what this is, a computer program.
I realize that, I see. Have we done this, you know, because there's places that businesses do it, restaurants do this.
I have to answer that. The third year I taught, they went to teachers getting their own subs. It was a total nightmare, because I had a sub that just decided they didn't want to show up. They were on the books. My class was in.
This wouldn't be them, I mean.
But that was their answer for that.
Yeah.
That was their answer for that.
If I knew I was gonna be out, say, "Next week, I'm going on vacation", or whether, you know, I either let my principal know, and I don't know how it works either. I'm not trying to act like I do, but, you know, I know there's businesses out there that do this on their own. And, you know, if I know I'm gonna be out, I let my principal know, or I get on there. Once my principal knows and let, you know, it's a spreadsheet or something, and me then, or say, Chad's a substitute, he can get on there and listen and say, "Hey, next week, Boons Creek needs a sub", and he puts it into it. Yeah, we don't pay twenty-seven thousand dollars for it, is what I'm saying. We do it ourselves, we got computer people.
He's silly.
There you go.
That's a job.
He said no. He said they're sweating now.
And it's not something that's gonna be done tomorrow either, you know, it's, we're in this great cost-cutting thing, and now we're fixing to spend more. And I know you're gonna say you're saving money because of the overtime, I realize that.
No, what I'm gonna say is, this is another one of those that I would classify as an unfunded mandate. It's a new law that's come about that we're faced to do something with. So come January first, we either start paying these folks in a time and a half for whatever time they spend at home. That's gonna happen if we don't do anything.
And I do understand, I, trust me, I understand it. I'm just wondering if there's not a way that we could look into it to save money.
Cheaper.
And to, I mean, I don't know. Maybe it is complex. I don't, I'm not a computer person, I don't know. I don't do this stuff for a living.
I think you raise a good question. I mean, that's all, that's all they're doing, is they've developed some computer software or method to do that. I, you know, I don't know if it's, I mean, have we asked our technology guys if there's?
There's an app for that?
If there's, yeah, if we can.
What type of build would there be, just on a high level, I mean, to even develop something like that?
Access or any type of database system would work. What, add it on a web page? It can be done, nobody's hacked it.
But is it gonna require somebody to be hands-on on a regular basis?
No, you can automate it. Of course you can automate it, because you don't have to work at the bugs, we're developing it ourselves, of course.
One of the things, and this would be some of the components of this, is it allows the schools to exclude certain subs if they've had that experience, or it allows teachers to have a preference list, because a lot of teachers will have a preference list with what subs they would like to be in their classroom. Right now, how it works is, usually it's the bookkeepers at each school. At the high schools, it would be one of the secretaries or the data clerks. So the principal approves a day off, whether that's in advance or whether it's, he might get sick the night before. And then it's up to either the bookkeeper or whoever's the designated is to find that sub. And if that's done after hours, that's where, as of January first, we've got to start paying these employees overtime. The exact amount, or the exact salary threshold is now thirty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars a year. This was just one area that was identified where we're going to incur a significant expense if we don't do something, whether it's frontline or whether it's something else, whatever the board decides. As of January first, it's gonna be roughly sixty-eight thousand a year is, based on current trends.
So that's five thousand a month.
A little over, yeah.
A little over five grand.
And this works with Skyward.
This, they do, they are able to interface with Skyward as far as timesheets go, which is, now that has to be, you know, we have to get a lot of work out of that, that would be helpful in payroll, or speaking things up if.
And Brad, this also still allows principals to, if it's like an interim, like it's gonna be longer than two weeks, they still get to find somebody. It gives them the, you know, the, to kind of override that.
So a principal has, there's different levels of control based on what the principal would like. Some principals want a little more control than others, so the principal has.
It leads it to their discretion.
They have to approve, yeah, they have discretion on that with this system.
Any principal would like to.
Can I ask a question? And I can't agree more. I did this one year as assistant principal, it's probably the hardest job in the building to get subs. And our people, like, I know my bookkeeper works a lot of hours doing that. My question with this is, what happens if a sub can't be obtained through the system? Let's just say that a teacher gets sick at the last minute, so then what happens? Because that's where our bookkeeper works the most. It's not the planning ahead, it's the ones that happen at the last minute. So then, you know, your kid's sick in the middle of the night, or what, so then what happens?
So what happens is, with this system, is the teacher would still have to go on to the app, they could do it from their phone, and say, "I'm sick, I can't do that tomorrow". Let's say it's ten o'clock at night, when that happens. Teacher starts throwing at ten o'clock at night. So then the system at that point, as long as the teacher goes on there and alerts the system, "I can't come in tomorrow, I'm sick", there's an alert, this system alert sends out alerts to subs that are on the, let's just say, the list or in the system. And it alerts them. A sub could certainly go on there, and if they're awake at twelve o'clock or five in the morning and see that, "I'm gonna be there". But if that doesn't happen.
I guess my question is, what if you have three people do that, and there's three people that don't have subs the next morning? How do we get subs?
Well, then that's when, that's fall back on the bookkeeper if the system can't, if it can't, I get it.
Well, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I think that's the problem there. It's not that we, the problem is we don't have enough subs. That's the problem.
So the only way to one hundred percent cover this is you gotta go with the Cadillac plan, it's about eighty-eight grand a year. This system's not foolproof. It will cut down significantly on that sixty-eight thousand a year, but it's not foolproof. So if you want a hundred percent coverage, you gotta go with the Cadillac plan, it's about eighty-eight thousand a year.
Which is where they, is that, when you say the Cadillac plan, is that where they are actually providing subs?
Right, that's where the subs are not Washington County employees. That third company employs them, does all the background checks, does their payroll. They do a hundred percent. Yep.
But plus the, plus the sub cost. I mean, the eighty-eight thousand didn't pay for the subs.
Yeah, that's their full, when they presented, we, they gave us a rate on what the charge was, and about eighty-eight's the full cost.
How do you know how many hours of subs you're gonna have during the course of the year?
We based it off the previous year's usage of subs, whenever I did that calculation. I looked at the last previous year's full sub hours.
Okay, well, let me, okay, so if that's the total cost, we're, under this program, we're still gonna pay the subs. So when you add the sub cost into this, what are you talking about?
We're saying that we're paying the subs, you're paying the subs anyway.
Well, but that's what you said they're doing with the Cadillac plan, is that the eighty-eight thousand included the sub compensation.
It does.
Okay, so you have to take and add the sub compensation to this to compare apples to apples.
I don't know that you do, we're still paying the subs today. I mean, I mean, we're still paying the subs.
Are we paying them eighty-eight thousand?
You're not paying the sub, you're paying the company.
This is just the extra cost to the company. If we get our own subs without the company, Mitch, we're still gonna pay seventy dollars a day for subs.
Correct, and if we're doing the Cadillac plan.
Yep.
The vendor's paying the seventy dollars a day.
Right.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, you have to take, I mean, you compare this to the Cadillac plan, you have to add the actual sub cost.
Is it still seventy a day that they pay theirs?
I thought it was a different amount.
Well, they're going.
It's up to us.
The way that I remember that presentation is the term I'm using, Cadillac plan. They're gonna use our sub rate and then add, I think it was fifteen percent. And that's going by memory when they presented that.
I forgot about that.
Fifteen percent, they're paying.
Well, you had told us that Johnson City uses the frontline plan, and you reached out to Dr. Barnett, and he said he was very happy with it, didn't he?
Yes. I would venture to guess it's something approaching half the systems in the state use. I don't know of a single system that's using the application.
This, this program certainly will not cut down on all overtime. It's not gonna cut it all out, but if it cuts down on half of it, it's gonna pay for itself.
Be one of the.
But yeah, yeah, so, but if you don't wanna go with this and you want us to bring that group back in or some groups back in that fully employs the subs, then we can do that. We just need to try to do, well, I mean, if we don't have something in place by March of January, we'll start paying overtime, which we can do that, but for a while until we get something implemented. But that's your decision as the board.
I mean, we heard from one of our principals that the big problem was not having subs. It wasn't, it wasn't the planning and the mechanism for finding the subs so much.
Well, I'll say, you know, our, our book, like, I think most bookkeepers do. Our bookkeepers spend a great deal of time on that, I will say that. And, you know, even during the day, when they could be working, you know, on the, like, things that are probably their job, they spend a great deal of time on that. So I think there needs to be a system. My concern would just be how, I think that we would need to sit down and really determine how we're gonna make that work, that we don't come into school and have four or five people that don't have subs and then not have people to cover them.
But it alerts you. You have to approve pretty much most of it.
It's set up to where the principal will be alerted.
Yes, where you will be alerted.
Being alerted and approving is two different things.
Well, but what it is, is if you're sick, it alerts you. If it's a personal day or something like that, I think you have to approve it. They said you have a lot of different ways to control things.
And this won't, sure, it absolutely won't. I mean, if you have three teachers get sick at eleven o'clock, it could, there could be three subs out there. This, this was just a lower cost option that would cut down on, we think, cut down on a fair amount of the overtime, but I personally have no preference. If the board wants to entertain the more expensive plan, we'll get them in here. I mean, a lot, up to the board.
So, the eighty-eight thousand version, you're saying we don't ever have to call another sub?
No, that's correct. We don't pay them out of this office.
Do we pay, so you're saying that's all we spend a year is $88,000 in subs?
No, no.
You've got to send that $70 that we're paying subs to the sub.
I understand.
It was over $400,000 last year, $450. Well, $88,000 would be in addition to what we're paying now. We're still going to fund.
The $400 is about moving.
I'm hearing you say that they got their own employees.
They got their own employees, but you're still paying them.
So we'll pay $480,000?
Right.
Okay.
15% more than we would have paid last year, all things being equal.
But the thing is, no matter which company you go with, at 4:00 in the morning when you call in, and when Rachel gets there and unlocks the door and everybody comes in, you're three short. It don't matter which company you got, they're going to still be three short when you turn around.
Let me say this. If you're going to do $480,000, we don't have to worry about it. Just let them do it, and then our bookkeepers do their job.
You still, you're, you're not, I'm telling you, you're not turning away and walking away, and it's done by the Cadillac plan. I think you're getting a false impression that when Rachel unlocks doors, everybody's going to show up just because nobody else has. I mean, I'll agree, I think there's a lot of things going, but, you know, it's nicer. But you're, by spending that extra $40, I think you're getting a false sense of security that you're, everything's just fixed, we fixed the problem.
That's not to say that the party will be able to fill that sub if the teacher gets sick at 11 o'clock the night before. They may or may not. I would, I'm sure that they'll alert the principal. You know, you'll know that you've got a teacher that's called in sick. But the third, the way that the third party, the way that that one handles it all, presented it, you know, there...
Well, the good thing is they trained, they sifted through and found out that...
That's true. We will not have, it'll save expense and some time management. Yeah, okay, yeah, absolutely.
I've got a lot of school boards that do this already. And I'm not going to speak to the price of it, but so if you are a teacher or you're a teacher's aide and you're sick, you hit a button on the app, it goes to a computer and it pings somebody who's on the approved sub list. And if that person doesn't respond with a certain amount of time, it pings somebody else. And it keeps pinging until there's a response. The response rate is really, really, really high. You don't have, I mean, you may get pinged at 5:00 AM, hey, you need to be over across the county, but, but the response rate is pretty high. And if you have someone who rejects the ping, they go off the sub list. So there's a penalty if you don't play. Now, I don't, I'll be honest, I'm not familiar with frontline. None of my clients use frontline. Some of them use some much more expensive system of programs. But the thing that Brad was talking about where you actually get a temp agency that comes in and does it, they do guarantee 100% coverage. Now, I don't know what the job market is here, so I don't think it'd do it here, but you've got a teaching college, you've got an educated workforce. I would think that they could be able to do it okay. I've got one client where if they don't fill a place, they pay a penalty. So the onus is on them to find a pool of workers. Now, again, I don't know that they could do that here, because I don't, I think y'all probably are looking at pretty close to full employment here. I don't know that there are people up there looking for jobs. But, anyway, I just wanted to tell you a little bit more how it works. The system keeps pinging until it finds someone for you. I can't speak to frontline because I'm not familiar with them at all. I will tell you that this cost is really low compared to what I've seen other districts pay. Anyway, that's all I've got to say about that. And I've seen it work. This is really where folks are going, not to save overtime costs, but just because it's faster, because the computer goes ping, keep didn't answer, ping, bill didn't answer, ping, oh, we've got Mary Beth. And so it achieves complete coverage faster than waiting for somebody to get off the phone.
Well, and too, they said there was a database you go on and instead of calling, you know, all of, you know, 10 people and find out, well, they're Grandview, Jonesboro, Lamar, Westview, or whatever, it's all already on there. So you realize, hey, you know, all these people are booked. There's only 16 that aren't working today at 5:00 in the morning when you just got that. And if you really, I guess if those bookkeepers, that's their job to still do that, they would probably reach out to those 16 and say, "Hey, I've got an opening." You know, after she exhausted that, you know, all the rest of them are full.
Now, to your question, Mr. Fleaner, about, well, you know, other businesses do this in-house, and they pick up the phone or they manage a database. I can tell you a lot of the larger districts that I represent used to have their own database, and they've gotten away from it to go to, I couldn't tell you why, but I know that they've gone away from their own database. I think because they didn't want to maintain that themselves. But to your question about how are we different from other businesses, one of the things that's really different is if you, if you work at the Shoney's and you don't have a waitress there, the other people pick up the table. And that's the way it is. If you've got a kid with special needs who needs specialized services, you can't just find anyone who can come in and do it. And likewise, you can't leave that kid unserved or you're out of compliance with federal law. So your business is a little harder to compare with other businesses. I can't speak to this, I only want to describe the nature of the program. If y'all have some questions about this versus the Cadillac plan versus another vendor, maybe y'all need to interview some folks and find out what can you do for us? And maybe they need to know more about what is going on here in Washington County. But, anyway.
Yeah, and that $88,000 was just, like I was explaining to me, is, was just, we took last year, I took last year's full sub hours at the time it was presented. All things being equal, we had have paid $88,000 more than we paid the year before. And so that, so that $88,000 can vary. If we use more subs, then it'd be more, you know, but, but that's all things being equal from the prior year comparison. So, so it's up to you. We can get another company in here, or we can try this, or you can do neither.
I'd like to try this plan this year, just to help us out, because I don't think we have months to kind of look into it because we're going to have to start paying overtime the first of January.
The $26,000, we said that would be one-time fees, $10,600, and the initial term prorated fees of $15,302.68. Is that just for the six-month period from January 1 through June 30?
They would start, if you approved tonight, we tell them tomorrow, go ahead. They would start building the platform. So that includes starting from when they start building the platform. It would be through June 30.
So that would only be for the remainder of the year.
Yeah, remainder of this year.
So if we waited until July to do it and paid the overtime this first half of the year, or this first half of next year, then we could pay them July 1st $26,000 for the next year and have it for a full 12 months.
It'd be more because that prorated, initial prorated term would go to $23,768, then you'd have $10,006.
I thought it was, I thought it was going to be $68,000.
That's if we do nothing. And all things being equal, we're going to pay about $68,000 in overtime, starting for 12-month period.
Because of the new law, because of the new law for people that's under $35,000.
So why don't we just go for the Cadillac program and begin with?
It's going to cost you $87,000 more than it did last year. And that's not budgeted. This is a, as I said earlier, it's another unfunded mandate that we have to leave.
All right, well, I don't like, I'm having this done.
Give them some background Mr. Bennett shared in the process of how this thing works, you know, where it's pinging and it fills those spots. I think it would be really interesting to see after a year, Mary Beth, how it actually performs. And if, you know, we may get to a point where you don't have three unfilled positions at 7:30 in the morning, you know, because this thing works. And, and then that solves the Cadillac plan. If it does, then we go back?
Well, ultimately, it's just, I mean, our data clerks, I mean, our bookkeepers, I mean, it's unbelievable sometimes how many hours they have to put into this. So if it takes that away from them, I think it's worth it.
And I don't, and I don't want to settle, take it off, because I don't think it will. But I think instead, I think your bookkeeper told me she works an average of eight hours a week overtime. So if that cuts it, maybe it cuts it down to two. I, I mean, what does that say?
We are usually messaging at 6:00 AM every morning for almost an hour, trying to fill our positions and figure out how we're going to put everybody. We, yeah, we call our dance of the subs every morning.
It may cut down half, it may cut down 75%. We just, we won't know until it's in action, I mean, and to know, so.
And, and from the finance committee, we moved to bring this forward because of the research that Director of Finance, Mr. Hale, had done. And we felt like this was the best thing financially for us to do as well as to take care of the positions.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Mary Beth seconded. Jennifer, I need a roll call vote on this.
Mr. Gage?
Yes.
Mr. Hannan?
Yes.
Ms. Dillinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fleaner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hannan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
No.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Motion passes. I need a two-minute break.
Well, I'm ready to get started.
Well, I have a request for a two-minute break.
All right, back in.
Commissioner Klein?
We're ready.
All chatter, all chatter.
No, just go ahead, just go ahead.
So you ready?
Yes.
Committee.
Thank you, sir.
Committee considered a request purchased three-year vehicles for the transportation and maintenance departments. These vehicles will be purchased through the state contract and will not be required to go through the bidding process and will be purchased with available budgeted funds. And the committee moved to approve this and bring it to the full board. So we move for approval.
I would like to amend this motion. Can I do that before you say?
I need a second on the motion. I have a second.
Second.
I want to amend the motion that we vote for each of those items separately.
Okay. Where's the list? There was a year list yesterday. Okay. Can we outside the list?
I need a second on the amendment.
How do I know if I don't know any more? If we're looking.
I've not seen the list.
Hold on, where's the list that we had yesterday? Not that one.
No, that's not what I had. I don't know what we're gonna need. Hang on.
You want the list from yesterday?
From yesterday, that's what we looked at yesterday.
I didn't bring the, I brought the modified one, so I'll bring that.
He's gonna get your list from what we looked at yesterday.
Why is there a modified one?
You want?
Why is there a modified one?
I don't know that it's modified. My motion was based on the list from yesterday.
He said he's got a modified list or something.
I think he's got a more complete list or something. I'm not sure, I haven't seen his, his other list. What I need you to see is what we looked at yesterday.
Do I have, someone need a second? I second.
I asked, why are you got a modified list? What's the difference?
Well, it's not really a modified list, it's just other options.
All right, so let me, let me go over this list if I can, please. This is what we were presented with yesterday. Vehicle number one is for transportation, half-ton four-by-four, I guess that's a pickup truck. Costs twenty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars. Yeah, half-ton four-by-four truck, and it's for Tony Roberts to drive. Existing truck would go to supporting personnel, and then his, I guess, would go to a mechanic so that they've got a spare. Vehicle number two would be a maintenance van. Transit F-350 high roof would go to Alex Moore van. If can salvage would be one for the spare fleet. Vehicle number three would be a small, it's listed as a small SUV, four-by-four for maintenance. Oh, that, that van, excuse me, was thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. The SUV would be a Chevy Traverse, twenty-seven thousand, one thirty-seven. This would be for Mr. Philip Patrick. His existing truck, which I'm sure is probably high mileage, would go to somebody in the grounds crew. Total cost eighty-one thousand, seven ninety-two. What Mr. Hale has budgeted, in the budget, is eighty-three thousand, nine thirty-eight for the three vehicles. Is that correct, Mr. Hale?
That's the budget dollars remaining, yes.
So the board moved for approval to bring it to the full board, and so I understand it to second, which to vote on separately.
Well, I have a motion on amendment to vote on it separately.
And I have a second.
And I have a second. So I need a roll call vote on the amendment.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangner?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
All right. Motion amendment passes. So now.
You're gonna vote on the motion as amended, one truck at a time.
Transportation half-ton four-by-four, I guess.
You need to adopt the entire motion.
Okay, sorry. I need a motion if we accept it.
No, you just, you just need to.
All right, I need a roll call vote on the motion. As amended. As amended.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangner?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Okay.
Commissioner Klein?
It's in your court, sir. Well, I can take it.
Well, that's what I'm.
I can take it, it's okay. So, as amended, we would need to vote on vehicle number one. You should have it on your sheet. Transportation half-ton four-by-four at a price of twenty-two thousand, three forty-one. And so I understand it, these are all three from state bid, which does not require any further bid work.
So are we getting a spare vehicle out of this first one? Or is it going to a mechanic that's actually going to be driving it?
It's my understanding that this vehicle would go to Mr. Roberts.
Right.
And his vehicle would go to a support personnel.
Yes.
And that person's vehicle could then go to a mechanic to be a spare.
So it would be extra.
The one the mechanic's in, I'm told is really rough. So the mechanic's existing vehicle would go to a spare because they need a couple of vehicles for spare when a vehicle goes down.
Mechanic's vehicle would go to a spare.
Yeah. That's kind of the domino effect that it was implying.
I was just trying to figure out the domino effect because it says one spare here, but then it said two, the mechanic, and I just.
Yeah, that existing mechanic's vehicle, Tony Roberts said, was really rough.
Okay.
But it would be useful as a spare in an emergency if that vehicle goes down.
The existing truck, the existing vehicle Tony has now, year and mileage on it?
Try to get that, I don't have it with me right now.
He, that position has historically driven one of the older vehicles or one of the spares.
But, yeah, I just, I just wanted to know what the facts were.
Yes, question, is this normal that we buy vehicles towards the middle of the year or do we wait towards the end of the year? I know it's budgeted.
It was planned in the budget, so this would be normal.
I mean, if there's another need comes up before the end of the year, it'd be a, okay. I didn't know if normally we wait towards the end of the year and then, you know, bought while we had budgeted, I wasn't sure.
Just in the short time I've been here, I mean, it's happened.
Just whatever.
It's not happened at the end.
Okay.
Just in the little over two years I've been here.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
We don't have a motion or a second, do we?
Motion is to purchase vehicle number one.
Do I have a second on both vehicle number one?
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Flainer?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangner? Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Okay, motion passes.
Thanks, sir. The next motion would be to purchase a maintenance van. New van, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Transit F-350 high roof. This would be one for Alex Moore, whoever he is, I'm sorry, I just don't recognize the name. High roof, does that mean it's similar to a Sprinter van?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So it'd be used by the plumber?
Yes, sir.
I take it the Sprinter van we've got's getting some high mileage and so forth?
No, we just stayed on the fleet.
Oh, okay.
We just bought one last year because the other Sprinter van was falling apart and we sold it.
Okay.
Back doors wouldn't shut.
So why do we need this one then?
Because the one this plumber's driving's falling apart now too.
Okay, well, that's what I said, okay. All right, so the motion is to buy this van that's comparable to a Sprinter van?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a second. Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion?
How many of those vans do you have, Mr. Patrick?
Sir?
How many of those vans do you have for the?
If this one's purchased, there will be two.
Two, okay.
And we've never bought a new one for that purpose, have we?
Yes, sir, we did.
Oh, we did buy one new one, okay.
Yes, sir.
I forgot.
The one in three because this one's only space. If it can be salvaged, it should be salvaged, okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Oh.
Mr. Flainer?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangner?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Motion passes, Commissioner Klein?
Thanks, sir. Item number three says, small SUV four-by-four maintenance, twenty-seven thousand, one thirty-seven. Chevrolet Traverse would be for Mr. Patrick. Existing vehicle would go to grounds crew, Mr. Teague. Grounds crew, Teague, due to vehicle need. So I can assume that would go to Mr. Teague.
No, sir, it'll just be put in that, in that department.
Okay. That's a motion for approval?
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I guess my only question is the size of the Chevy Traverse. Is that like a three-row vehicle? And I guess I question whether we'd need a three-row vehicle for the maintenance supervisor to drive around. Could we go with a smaller four-by-four? In the Traverse? What's it similar to?
It's bigger than Equinox, but my opinion is, I'd rather see a, I'd rather see Philip have another extended cab pickup that can be passed back down to the, into it. But I mean, that's just, or a four-door pickup that can be passed on to the maintenance department later on.
I just think it needs to be usable and appropriate for that department to be able to pass it down because, you know, he's gonna be giving us another one to the grounds crew. There's no use for this after so long.
Mr. Patrick, what would you do with that when you've got another car? I mean, what would be the?
Mr. Flainer, I think the maintenance department, transportation department has recommended what the maintenance department needs. If you all would choose to do something different, that'll be fine.
That's not what I asked you, I, what would you do with the SUV after you got done with it? That's what I was asking.
I guess, I've got it till it's worn out, we'd buy another one or not. Or if I retire or quit or get fired, then there would be a vehicle for the maintenance supervisor to drive.
So somebody else is driving a SUV now in maintenance? Is what I'm asking.
No, sir.
Is this your preference of a vehicle or as a truck? And I'll say, you know, at work, we drive Ford Explorers. And we used to drive trucks, and we get a lot of stuff in these Ford Explorers that keeps out of the weather as well. And they work very good, so, I mean, I know my work's different in America or whatever, but I'm just saying.
My biggest thing is I understand what you're saying, Todd, but I'm looking at passing it on down when it gets a hundred thousand miles on it. How many miles is on your pickup now, Philip?
A hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-three.
You just getting that broken in, man.
I know, I know.
But I'm just trying.
I mean, you could, you can store so much stuff in it. I mean, we, we took out the metal seat and pack it full of stuff. I mean, it's, you can, you use it, you can. That's all I'm saying, just my, my work.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Flainer?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
No.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Gangner? Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
No.
Mr. Irvin?
All right, based on that, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, we, you want, he needs a vehicle, obviously, so.
It passed, didn't it?
No. No. So what, what is? Somebody make a recommendation for a truck or Explorer or whatever, because you brought Explorers, but.
Well, I mean, it, the Explorer and the truck is, is, I mean, the Traverse would be the same thing.
They're gonna have to come back with another, with, with something else off the contract. I mean, how, how, we, what would you vote on right now? What are you gonna say?
I guess the board needs to tell what we're gonna allow him to drive, because basically that's what we're doing here, so.
Maybe we get a.
Thanks, Brad, I mean, I'm pretty aware what y'all are gonna allow me to drive. But I'll be sure to meet them specifications.
What are, what other alternatives do you have, yeah?
For trucks?
Yeah, let's look at it, let's look at it, I mean.
So, you can pass this around the bottom section or other trucks. There's other SUVs on there, and there's other trucks that are on the state contract. So, at the bottom of that section, there are, you know, you'll see the other SUVs on the state contract, and then you've got a few trucks there on the bottom.
Stay in the less than thirty thousand dollar range?
Yeah, you'll, the budget dollars would be twenty-seven, one thirty-seven, plus twenty-one, forty-six, which is gonna be twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy, uh, two hundred and eighty-three dollars. So just stay under that amount, you're still in budget.
How much, Brad, I'm sorry?
What amount?
Twenty, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars.
So we can go with the Chevy fifteen-hundred crew cab, which is giving the passenger allowance that he would need.
And if it's, there's one that's listed as four-door, if it's not listed as four-door, it's just the extended cabs, what Tony told me, so. So you, you've got a four-door and you've got extended cab.
I'll make a motion, we buy the four-door Chevrolet.
I'll second it.
Which one?
Number two on the truck list.
Twenty-eight, six sixty-four?
Yes, sir.
You have an extra copy?
Yeah, I do, I do, I got two probably. Give me a second, it should be two.
Jason, did you say the Chevy Silverado fifteen-hundred for twenty-eight, six sixty-four, is that the one you said?
Yes, what I made a motion.
Chad, sorry, Chad. Twenty-eight.
Mr. Crew cab.
That's a four-door crew cab.
Yes.
I have a motion and a second, do I have discussion? Any more discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Flainer?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangner?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
No.
Mr. Irvin?
Six-three.
Is that all, Mr. that passed?
No, sir, it's not all. I'm just getting wound up, dude.
Heard.
That passed, right?
Yes, that passed.
Thanks, sir. Committee considered a request from Gray Elementary. Entering into a one-year, cop-year lease agreement with the option to renew through the state contract. Committee recommends a move for approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second, discussion?
High-dollar contract, thirty-five dollars a month?
Yeah, plus it's like four, forty-four thousandths of a penny per, per copy. It's by far their lowest price option. It's a through-the-state contract with the option to renew every one year.
So this is getting us one more step, having everybody under one contract?
That's correct. The rep with the state does say when this transition fully happens, then there could be some benefits.
Mike and Mike Keller, same press?
Roll call vote, please.
I thought that was in the motion.
It was. I'm sure. I don't know who said it was.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. McCann?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangner? Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You got copies of this next one, so, because we're probably needed to explain it to them. So let me, let me reread this. The committee considered an amendment to the director of schools contract to modify a compensation component to be in compliance with state guidelines. This will have a neutral effect in overall compensation. We move for approval.
Second.
This is, this is correcting something that's been done incorrectly. So, Mr. Hale, I appreciate his effort to, to get us straight with the advice of Mr. Bennett.
I left, evidently, I left this whole stack on my desk, I'll go get it. That's the, that's the amendment. This was in the drop box for the finance committee, so you see this. This, if you'll pass this around, this is a reference to the former director's contract. Would you like me to read it? Yeah, and I need to, evidently, I left one stack down on the, oh, I've got mine here.
This, this doesn't change the amount he receives, it changes how he receives it. And I'm sure y'all got it, but I'm gonna get to read this again.
Pass it around, yeah, that's one page, yeah.
Washington County Board of Education has contracted employment with Dr. William Flannery for him to serve as director of schools, Washington County, September five, two thousand nineteen. Whereas his contract provides the terms and conditions of Dr. Flannery's employment as director of Washington County Schools through June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. Whereas it has been the practice of Washington County Board of Education to provide the director of Washington County Schools with compensation to offset the director's mandatory contribution toward his participation in TCRS. And whereas the current contract between Washington County Board of Education and Dr. Flannery is silent as to this compensation. So therefore, premises considered, it is hereby agreed between Washington County Board of Education and Dr. William Flannery as follows. The November fifteen, two thousand eighteen contract between Washington County Board of Education and Dr. Flannery is hereby amended to increase his monthly compensation by the total amount of five hundred, eighty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents, which amount is equivalent to Dr. Flannery's required TCRS contribution, and which amount the Washington County Board of Education has already been paying on behalf of Dr. Flannery. All other terms and conditions of the contract between Washington County Board of Education and Dr. William Flannery remain the same. We've been paying something that we shouldn't have been paying, so now we have to pay him and let him pay it. That's the short version, I'll let Dr., uh, Mr. Hale explain the long version.
So the contract with Ms. Halliburton that I passed around, if you go to page two, there's a highlighted section in section six. That sentence was in Ms. Halliburton's contract and Mr. Dykes. And that is where the board paid the five percent contribution for both of those directors. Well, Dr. Flannery's contract was silent and we didn't catch it, so we've been doing the same thing for Dr. Flannery we've been for, did for Ms. Halliburton and Mr. Dykes, which is the five percent contribution that's mandatory for certified staff to make to TCRS. We've been paying that as an adjustment, just the same as we did for Kimber and Mr. Dykes. What we found out through Mr. Bennett. What we found out through Mr. Bennett is there is a guideline that, um, that we're not supposed to do it that way. Been in place for several years. So to, for all things to be equal, we will quit paying that reimbursement, but at the same time, we will increase the gross pay amount by the same amount, which is the same thing Ms. Halliburton and Mr. Dykes got. Even though their contract, for example, when Ms. Halliburton came in, her initial contract was one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred in gross salary, she also was getting a five percent reimbursement on the back end in addition to that gross salary. So this is just a way of doing the same thing, but doing it in a way that's compliant with state regulations now. Did I say that correct, Mr. Bennett?
You did, yeah. TCRS regs say you cannot pay an employee's contribution for that employee. So Dr. Flannery's contract fixed that by taking it out, but, a, a, and everyone was fine with that, but payroll kept grossing it up. So this just memorializes what you have been doing.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second. Oh, sorry.
So does the, his contract verbally change now?
No, sir. It, it, it memorializes what you have been doing all along. And because it's not a, a change, it, it's not an extension of the contract, it doesn't require the fifteen days notice otherwise, that would otherwise be necessary.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Flanery?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Flanery?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee discussed purchasing the two drivers' ed leased vehicles that are coming due in December two thousand nineteen. Purchase price of each vehicle at the end of the lease is thirteen thousand, fourteen dollars. Both vehicles are two thousand seventeen Chevrolet Malibus, and we move for approval of the purchase. Both vehicles have around twenty-eight thousand miles on them, and as we discussed, I'm sorry, I need to let you get your second first.
I have a second.
Second.
As we discussed in finance and discussion with the, the director, uh, each of these vehicles could be assigned to a high school, and they could use them as a, as an extra vehicle for hauling people. They could take them to Nashville and back, and it'd really save us some money. At thirteen thousand dollars, it's not gonna take many trips to make them pay their way, or they could use it for short trips. We just felt like it'd be a good investment for the two high schools.
The range of value for these just seems to be anywhere from twelve-four to fourteen-four, just a range when you go online, and I would need to have that. It's a lease buyout, so I would argue to the auditors, it's part of the lease contract, we're buying out the lease, but I do not, um, if normally we were buying a used vehicle, it has to be within a certain range of the value that you would get off of a national site like an ADA or Kelly Bluebird, so.
We're not continuing to use these as drivers' ed, is that correct?
No, we're, we're gonna be buying, buying or leasing whatever we do, two new drivers' ed, one for each high school.
There's so much demand for a vehicle to take here or there, and sometimes they're only taking one or two athletes across country, or wrestling, or help me out, don't care.
And these would be a lot more economical to drive than those vans are.
Be a driver, and you're gonna, you know, four passengers, three in the back, it's pretty comfortable. We fit them out with fueling cars.
'Cause our vans are.
Bad.
Bad.
Okay, roll call vote on this, please.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangler?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Day?
Yeah.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
No, ma'am.
Mr. McCann?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee considered a request from the director of schools to add an administrative assistant position to the maintenance department. Uh, we were given a job description, and the committee voted to approve this. Uh, I would simply make each of you aware that this was in some of the items that we deleted from the budget that did get passed, uh, and here we are, once again, coming back, of course, two cars we just approved and bought, we're not in the original budget, and this is a position that probably, with expenses, would be upward of, I think we said forty to fifty thousand dollars a year if it's a person that takes insurance.
So we said no at budget time for this job, but now we're saying yes halfway through the year.
Well, it's come, it's come back to us. So the finance committee wanted, basically wanted the full board to make the decision.
We didn't give it. Yeah, we didn't recommend it. We didn't recommend it. We decided to send it to the full board.
Well, this committee recommends approval.
Well, I wasn't supposed to say that, 'cause that's not what I said in my motion.
She'll say it recommends bringing it to the full board.
That was my mess-up when I typed it up, sorry, Todd.
Well, I just, well, I forget.
Are we discussing this, or are we waiting on?
Yes, uh.
No.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second, so we can talk about.
Well, you didn't make a motion then, did you? I mean, you did the way you read it, but you're saying it didn't come out of the committee that way. He's saying it didn't come out of the committee that way, I know he read it that way, but he's saying it didn't come out of the committee, though.
Let me withdraw my motion, if that's what I made, and let's put it on the table for discussion, see how the board feels.
I need a motion to do that.
I withdraw my motion.
Yeah, now I need a motion to put it on the table.
I'm asking it be put on the table for the board to make a decision on.
Okay, I have a second to his.
A second.
You're making a motion to do it. I'm making a motion to discuss it.
Discuss it.
For the full board to make a decision. That's what I'm asking. And I don't think that's necessary. I don't think it's necessary to make a motion to discuss it.
I have a motion.
Yeah.
I don't, I've never read that anywhere.
I knew, I knew.
You, you need a motion. So, and, and a second, and then discuss it. I mean, you heard Ms. Farm and Terry, and said, you need to do it.
All right. Can we discuss it without a motion?
So technically, no. Uh, I'm sorry, technically, you have to have a motion and a second to discuss it, but I've told people before, the, the rules exist to help the board, the board doesn't exist to serve the rules. So if you've got, if, if, if you've got a committee report here, and it's being brought to the board for the board's input, but it doesn't have the committee's blessing, I don't know what other vehicle you wanna do. This is the governing body of the Washington County, Washington County Schools. I don't know how else you're gonna talk about it, if you don't talk about it.
Well, if it's.
Let me save some time.
If it's a money thing, it should be discussed in budget time. True?
I don't disagree. I'm just saying that this board is sovereign over the operations of the school system, and if, if, if you wanna talk about it, you should talk about it.
Let me save some time. As finance chair, I move for approval.
There you go.
Okay, I have a second.
Second, so we can talk about it, yes.
Okay.
Back to the original.
Back to the original.
Motion?
Yeah.
So did you withdraw your new motion in a second?
Yeah.
Why not?
All right, now we're going to discuss.
Now, let me make a comment.
All right.
This, this was brought before the budget, before we approved the budget, it got taken out, now here, just a few months later, it's been brought back again. So it's up to this board to say yes, and we'll have to do a budget amendment, or we say no, and we put it off until.
Budget time.
The next budget.
Chad?
I know we got a lot of glaring needs in our system, and this may be one of them, and, and it may very well be, but we're having, I mean, I wasn't gonna bring this up at this time, this is a good time to talk about, we're having trouble with our buses, getting our bus drivers. And this is not, I mean, that to me is one of our high nails at the moment. And this job, and we could do something else with the money, especially since we ourselves approved and disapproved our budget. I agreed the first time we sent it, was approved with this in there, but then we, our, ourselves, we took that out, you know, because we couldn't afford it, and, and I.
All right, wait a minute. Mary Beth?
Well, I just have a concern with this, and it's nothing personal, but I know of at least four kindergarten classes that are overcrowded with twenty-two students, and I prefer to hire extra staff to help these classes. We made a commitment to keep K through three classes lower, and this money would be better spent on our students.
Mr. McLean? One more comment, then I'll shut up and run for the rest of the board. I would simply remind you that the budget we approved is pulling one point eight million out of our current fund balance. So we're already spending one point eight million into that savings account, if you will, we've got back there. We're already spending that much. Mr. Margaret?
I have three things. One, Mr. Hale, would this require a budget amendment or just simply a budget reclassification?
Okay, so after doing some studying, there is, uh, should the director choose some capacity in the maintenance category, where it could be reclassified within the same category so it wouldn't require county commission approval, but it would apply, require the board to do an amendment.
Okay. Uh, and the second thing is, uh, you know, I'd like to hear from Mr. Patrick as to what the benefit of having this position field would provide for the overall efficiency in operation of the school system.
Currently, the maintenance department has one million, one million, five hundred thousand square feet to take care of. We have about twenty-six employees in the maintenance department, we have thirty-two custodians, we have, uh, about two hundred and fifty acres of land we take care of, we have reports we have to do for the state of Tennessee as far as the, uh, life safety code, we have reports to do for the state of Tennessee as far as, uh, fire marshal reports, health department reports.
And who does those reports?
I'm sorry?
Who does those reports now?
Now, that's, that's a, that's a struggle that I could get through, and then, uh, then I have to have the custodial supervisor helps me with that, and then Ray, the warehouse manager helps me with that, and then sometimes I bring it to Jennifer, and sometimes I bring it to Gina, and, you know, we finally get it all together. Correspondents with, uh, principals, someone to answer the telephone when we're out, uh, it just, you know, the list goes on and on.
Part of, uh, and it's later on the, uh, the agenda, but part of the energy systems group proposal included an energy management package. Um, who's gonna manage that?
Energy management.
Or you're, uh, building your system.
Oh, uh, computerized maintenance.
Yes, or your maintenance management.
Yes, that's with the school, dude. This person will be involved in that heavily, uh, to, to be sure that, uh, work orders are classified and sent to the right place, and, and the people doing that now are the same three I was talking about, myself and.
Okay. I said I had three things, I forgot the third.
Where would this person work out of, of the garage?
Of the maintenance department, of the maintenance shop.
The warehouse part or the garage part?
Warehouse.
Is this a, the motion, well, the wording, I don't know if it was a motion or not, said it questioned the director, so it's something you feel a need for?
Yeah, question, my person would make that department more efficient.
Mary Beth?
Hey, Brad, can you elaborate exactly for the money, where you're moving the money from? I mean, what, what was it supposed to be spent on?
There is, um, in conversation today with the director, uh, there is a position that, uh, that is within the maintenance department that is currently open because somebody's left, so it would be moving funds from that position to fund this secretary position.
So what position are we doing with ours?
Mr. Patrick would have to answer that.
Helper.
Just a helper?
Yeah, I've got, yes, ma'am.
And you're good with moving that helper money to a administrative assistant so it could be reoccurring?
Well, the helper's budget was reoccurring also, so.
That's right, that, that's reoccurring now, but this one is not. So if we take that money, you won't be retiring a helper, you will just hire an administrative assistant.
That's correct, but then I'll come back to that budget here, and I'll ask for money for another employee. Or maybe two.
He's honest.
Well, everybody just adds to the wish list.
No, are they?
You know, I've got a wish list.
I'd say thank you, and move on.
I've been a little low before, it's okay. I'm a pretty big guy.
Uh, anybody else? Any more discussion?
Well, all right, so the helper, what the helper is being paid salary-wise is what the assistant would be paid for.
It wasn't me exactly, but we put this individual on a salary schedule, committed with other visiting secretaries, so it'd be. Exactly what it'd be, yeah, it's two different salary scales, unless you've got a market interest.
Is there an increase or a decrease?
Well, the, the secretarial scale would typically be a little less than what a maintenance scale would be. I mean, not a tremendous amount, but that is.
Then the wild card would be insurance.
Yeah, you don't know if the new person will take family insurance with just, you know, fifteen grand expense, or if they're taking single, and, you know, it's just, you have a range there.
I remember my third question. Okay. I did, I did remember my third question, and it's from Mr. Hale, and I know it hadn't come out yet, 'cause they haven't finished the cap, but, uh, you know, we budgeted, how much of fund balance did we budget in FY nineteen?
You, you budgeted around one point nine million.
Using one point nine of fund balance.
Yeah, if all things come in exactly, is there a budget that you're going to use one point nine million of your fund balance?
But, no, in FY nineteen, the year that just finished, how much did we either?
About one, one point four, but we didn't dip into fund balance.
Right, so we added to fund balance.
We did.
Okay, well, uh, well.
So this is actually in the budget, it is budgeted, it, we're just using this person someplace else.
Yeah, what I didn't know last, you know, yesterday, the finance committee, 'cause I, I, I hadn't researched it, I didn't know, um, is there, it's about that open position. So, so since there is an open position right now that is budgeted, that's unsealed, from a budgeting perspective, from my world, yeah, I could take those funds, put them into a secretarial role, and for me, it's budget neutral to do it that way. It's just, it's just, there, Mr. Patrick wouldn't be able to hire the expert, you know, that open position.
So we, do we need to authorize the hiring of, Dr. Flanery, do we need to authorize the hiring of an administrative assistant with no budgetary change?
Uh, what you do is create the position.
Okay.
And then, technically, I do the hiring, and then I put that person on the salary schedule.
Okay.
That the board has.
So we can create the position, but we don't take any action on the budget, ergo, then you're forced to fund that position.
I think you need to create an appropriation line that does not currently.
Yeah, so what will happen is we know the budget dollars are there, since we're not going to refill that position.
So, we'll just apply it.
When I ring you the budget amendment next month, it will have that appropriation line in it, in the maintenance category. Yeah. But since we know the budget dollars are there now, we know, you know, it's there. It's time to reclassify that salary.
Every other department that has clerical help has a standalone line.
Right, right.
We just need to keep that constant.
I think it's a 161 subtext on there for secretaries and I'll just, that doesn't exist now in the category, but I will, I will have that on the budget amendment you get in a few weeks.
And this person won't even answer the phone for the bus garage, correct?
Well, I'm going to tell you, when Mr. Patrick and I first discussed it, we talked about using this person to help with buses.
I mean, I know that's a big thing too. I mean, people can't get a hold of nobody at schools, whatever, that's true, is that correct?
That piece, we're, we're hoping maybe that frontline system can help with that too.
Well, I, I definitely think that'd be a good integration for at least getting somebody heads up. I know from, because at 4:30, our system essentially closes down as far as getting a hold of somebody, even though we got buses out there, you know, Joe Blow's parents doesn't have any means of communication because most time they don't answer at schools.
Well, the guy's driving a bus.
Well, he, you know what I'm saying, but I mean, if they know so-and-so left late, you know, this person would essentially, would, would at least know that, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, could.
Mr. Barrett? So, you're saying this person would help out with the bus garage?
We talked about evolving that position into that. Yes, that's the only way I would...
Past 4:30?
I would think mornings.
Well, we've got to need, what I hear from parents weekly is they can't get a hold of anybody at 4:30. I mean, we're still being wore out on the bus issue. And the big problem is, there's nobody answering the phones at the school. Communication is terrible and parents are worried or concerned and there's going to be that. So, we need somebody that the school is answering past 4:30 till all those students are home or we need somebody at the bus garage answering till all those students are home.
And we're paying, and the deal starts at 6:00 in the morning.
We're trying to find money for everything else until, and, you know, we answer for the parents weekly. I don't know if you do, but every time I walk into Boon's Creek School or go to sports, that's all I hear.
I talked to two today that were living. A Ridgeview mother, I think, around 3:00.
So, this is going on everywhere, the bus problem?
You mean outside of the county?
I mean, no, in our county, it's not just one school. All the routes where I'm traveling.
Depends on who calls in sick and if anybody...
I know, I know we can't help it, I mean, I know today I went into Boon's Creek this evening at 4:30 and there were a bunch of kids there, well, there was a bus called out. I don't know what exactly happened, if it called, let them know, whatever, it was a mistake. Somebody made a mistake, oh, and, which are, you know, it just happened. But people were coming in there and, I mean, they were getting upset. Well, I mean, some people recognized who it was and I told them, you know, hey, listen, I'm, I'm sorry, it just, it is what it is, but I can understand 5 o'clock and they thought their kid was coming home from a bus and I think, I don't know if they got a text out, I think it was real late. But, I mean, if somebody made a mistake, but it's...
Are there not, I mean, we know where all these buses are, they all have GPS on. If there's not some kind of, or some kind of...
Well, this frontline will take care of that, I mean, as far as an earlier notice route, Jerry, I mean, can you...
This doesn't have anything to do, I mean, where the parents can tap into it. I mean, you got a big city and you can see where the bus routes are, when the bus is going to be, where your location is. You know, I...
I wonder if we want the general public to know where buses are?
I'm not talking, you, 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 I'm sure you can set it so restricted to parents and credit accounts and logging in just like everything else, but I agree, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I think there's, it's something to look at.
Well, maybe they can say the bus is running late or your child is expected to be delivered at this, be delivered home at this time, but not give the location for safety reasons. And I will say this, I took a call, John City's having problems too, because I did take a call from a John City parent that didn't know.
I'm going to beg you, Jerry, can we see in real time where every bus is?
We have that capability, yes. The reverse of trans, you can see where they're at.
Will you allow an individual to see one bus and one bus only?
I'm not that familiar with it, I'm, I'm going to say, I'm going to say I don't know. It sounds good, but I, I don't know if we can do it that, that specific or not. And I know today that, that bus that didn't run, it was on the list to be told to the school and the person who called the school neglected, forgot that bus number. We could send a bus out to take those kids home, but it was very late.
I mean, we done the best we could, don't get me wrong.
No, I, 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 look, I, I get the phone calls just like you guys do. It's, it's very frustrating because good bus drivers are hard to find.
Is it the pay problem, can we, is there a way we could try to get more out of the, the schools, out of assistants?
I mean, it's really more of a substitute bus driver problem. We, we've got people in the, in the pipeline to put them on routes. It's when somebody calls in sick at 5:00 in the morning. Five, six, seven, eight years ago, there were teachers in every building who had their CDL and they were willing to drive a bus route because they wanted to get the kids to school. We don't have those people anymore.
Well, does the bus mechanic drive every day around there?
Just about, yes.
Because somebody calling in and they're having some?
Yeah.
So, they still are sub-drivers?
Uh-huh, yeah.
But they're driving every day?
They're driving every day, I mean, we've got, you know, it's an elderly population, they've got health issues and, you know, they, we've got people who are out two, three, four weeks at a time. But we can't, we can't replace them with a full-time driver because they've got a job. We have to wait for them to come back.
We're kind of getting off the schedule here. We're getting off the, the motion.
Well, we're trying to clarify if that position was going to be named, but I'm sorry, too. Maybe we ought to look at hiring somebody where I was asked to make the next budget.
I think really that all this is a budget issue. So, I'm calling for questioning and I want a roll call vote on the motion. Chad?
I've got to go with register, I can't wait.
This, this is to add the administrative assistant position, correct?
Yeah, I'm going away till Mr. Flender comes back.
They're going to vote that one anyway, go ahead.
Or he'll tag it, he might tag it.
Mary Beth, you've already blown past your number.
Yeah, I have.
We have all that.
I'm at 10:45.
Yeah, well, my phone keeps telling me it's time to go to bed.
It's past my bedtime, about 2 hours.
Mister Lawrence, I'm home by 5:00, I'll be all right.
Mr. Barrett, you going to drive back tonight?
No, we're going to the Waffle House in a few minutes.
No, we may have to, or if we've got a cut there.
Waffle House.
Well, we've got a little downtime, a question went out on superintendent's list about two weeks ago. He said, "How are you attracting, how do you keep on bus drivers?" Come find out, Washington, the big difference between Washington County and the majority system of Tennessee is elsewhere, bus drivers are full-time, larger part-time. I don't know if that make a difference or not, but they get insurance day one, full-blown insurance day one. Now, that might be a budget buster.
Well, how do they classify them as full-time if they're only working X number of hours?
They use them, not everybody hires, puts 100 buses a day on the road like we do. You know, you got 20 buses, big deal, but 100 a day?
I reached out to the Greenville City Finance Director and they only have 17 bus drivers. So, those bus drivers also drive to athletic events, field trips, so they don't have a problem with what's called the 25-hour rule with state insurance. We have 100 plus, so we, it's about things for us.
Retirees?
Let me ask a question about, when we have a snow and we dismiss school, how many parents come by and take Ridgeview? How many parents goes to Ridgeview and picks up their kids?
Over half.
Yeah.
On a snow day? I mean, if we dismiss school early?
Ridgeview be the biggest one by far.
So, could we, I don't know, I'm, what I'm going to predict, what I'm asking is if we designate two buses or three buses, however many kids that rides the bus or, how many, how many school buses is at Ridgeview?
Seven, I believe.
Could we get by with four and load the bus and then cook and make that route bigger?
No, because what we have to do is we have to, we plan the bus routes by the potential number of kids who could ride that bus. That's, that's what generates it. The reverse trans program tells us how many kids are in that school building along a certain road and we plan it that way because if it's a, a snow day and we got to take everybody home, then we have to have reinforcement on the buses.
Well, that's what I ask, are we taking them all home or are we taking 50% home at a snow day? Because if I could send three buses to Ridgeview and increase that route out there and run that route, I've just freed up four buses to go somewhere else.
Just on surveys?
No, just the period, everything, I mean, no...
He's saying the problem would be on a snow day, the rest of the time.
I'm, I'm worried about the snow day, that's what I'm worried about. If I could go out there and increase that route at Ridgeview, I run that route, I pick up 15 kids on that bus and then I go in and I unload. But if I could go and increase that route and pick up 30 or 40, I've just freed up a bus. That's what I'm asking.
Legally?
I don't care what the first trend says.
Right, well, legally, we're, we're, we have an hour and a half to transport kids to and from school. Hour and a half in the morning, hour and a half in the evening. We do our best to keep those routes under an hour.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And I've called to have a question, okay. Roll call vote, please. No.
Mr. Hammond?
No.
Ms. Dallinger?
No.
Mr. Flender?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
No.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Dangert?
Uh...
Mr. Barrett?
This is on the administrative assistant, right?
Yes.
Not the buses? Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
No. Motion paid.
I'd like to see this brought back up at budget.
At budget, yes. Mr. McLean?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
All right, what's next on the list here?
Policy.
So, many papers?
Policy. I'm going to do my fast auctioneer speaking, okay? Uh, this, uh, policy meeting, the, it was dropped in the drop box today, correct? It should be in the drop box today. I make a motion, we approve the committee report.
I have a motion and a second.
I second.
Okay.
As I sit through it too.
Roll call vote, please. Oh, okay, that's what, okay, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Okay, continue, Mr. Flender.
Uh, the committee reviewed policies for the second and final reading. The following policies were reviewed, 1.604 Rules of Order, 4.206. The sixth league we shelved, didn't we, or did we, okay, so... We just pulled it out. The committee recommends approving the following for second and final reading, 1.604 Rules of Order, 4.206, 5, 5.610. I make a motion, we approve those.
On first reading?
For the second and final reading, sir.
Oh, second reading.
We got them all, Dr. Pugh.
And those are all changes because of law changes, correct?
Yes, second final reading on those, uh, yes, they come down from TSBA on one of them. But Scott's reviewed them and Jennifer White, TSBA has reviewed them.
But they're not because of law changes?
Hmm, one of them is law changes on line 17. And, yes, seven lines through 7 through 12.
Roll call vote on second reading. I know, I thought it did. Mitch seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Day?
Yeah.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flender?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Dangert? Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Committee recommends waiving first reading and passing 4.700 grading system on a second and final reading, so quality points could be added to the student grades at the end of first semester. I'll put that in form of a motion.
Second. Okay, any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flender?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cannon?
No.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Dangert?
Uh...
Mr. Barrett?
Uh...
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh... Motion paid.
Uh, the committee reviewed, reviewed the following policies for first reading, 1.101 Role of Board of Education, 1.1021 Enforcemental Code of Conduct, 1.202 Duties of Board Members, 6.300 Code of Conduct. This policy committee recommends that these be, uh, makes a motion, these be done on the first reading.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of it say aye. Okay, motion paid.
Mr. Chairman, the policy committee recommends passing the following policies from Section 5 on first reading, 5.310, 5.500, 5.501. Those are vacations and holidays, complaints about school personnel discrimination, harassment of employees. And, let's see, we need to do it first. Make a motion that we approve those on first reading.
Second. Second. All those in favor of first reading say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion paid.
Policy recommends deleting 5.404 Staff Use and Care of Personal Medication and placing it in administrative procedure man, manual. This comes to you as a form of a motion.
Second. Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Uh, there is one thing we wanted to pull off the table to discuss, then, where is it at?
It's 2.806, and then I talk about it at committee meetings, bids in quotations. It's the only policy you all have on the table. So, it would take an entire board to pull it off the table and send it back to policy committee review.
What did you say it was?
2.806 Bids in quotations, it was tabled in April.
You make that motion?
Yes, I do.
I seconded it.
Okay. I guess that'd be a roll call vote on taking it off the table, wouldn't it? Well, I'm going to the roll call, I'm going to wake them up. Roll call vote on that, please.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Dangert?
Uh...
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flender?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Irvin?
Uh, that's all we have, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Well, it's just off the table, we got to do something with it.
Oh, we, we wanted to send it, the motion was to send it back to the committee.
Sorry, we do, you got to make that.
Okay, make that, I make a motion, we send it back to the policy committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, you've got two seconds. All those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Is that okay?
You ready to go off too, ain't you?
All right, we're going to send it back to the policy committee.
And now that is a play.
Are, are we still in the policy?
We're certainly still in policy.
Okay, I had, since Mr. Bennett's here, do you, would you kind of give him a little bit about that one policy we were talking about? That's something that's kind of new and coming up. Yes. Oh, he knows about it, okay.
So, Ms. Dallinger, from, from what I'm aware of, that the discussion that the board has had, is with regard to your policy that concerns crowdfunding and in particular online funding. The policies, I recall, says that schools can do it, individual teachers can't. And, and there's some kick around about, well, should, should that be revised? The board can do whatever it chooses to do, you have broad discretion in terms of management, the fiscal operation of the school system. Uh, the concerns that I have, and this, this is guidance, I'm not telling you what you, what you, what you may or may not do or should or shouldn't do. But one of the issues that you run into when you do crowdfunding is, is equity. Not all of your schools have the same demographic makeup, not all of your, of your teachers have the same charisma. And so, you may have one teacher who is really good at crowdfunding and so maybe her class goes to go with some of these field trips. Another teacher maybe isn't quite so charismatic, maybe doesn't know how to do the crowdfunding thing or maybe the school just has, doesn't have the economic capacity. And so, you don't have funds for that class to go on the field trip. Well, state law says that you've got to provide things like field trips free of charge. If you're going to do it, you got to do it free of charge. Now, we, we all know that we, we do various fundraisers to augment those costs, but so that equity issue can touch on a legal issue and, and, and you've got to figure out a way to equalize that, which, by the way, is why your model policy puts the onus on the schools to do this, not individual teachers. Another real concern that, that I have is that when you have teachers who do their own fundraising, you create accounting issues that are massive headaches. Uh, I'm dealing with a case right now where there was some revenue coming in and there were two educators who did not record it with, with the bookkeeper. And so, it was money that was kept off the books. It's created a massive issue that the comptroller of the treasury is investigating. They've been camping out in this school since April of last year because they keep finding things. Now, the, the facile answer is to say you've got a lot, you just, you adopt some policies or you train everybody about uniform accounting procedures. Well, everybody is, is very well aware of the uniform accounting procedures. You deposit cash within three days, you're supposed to have... Deposit cash within three days, you're supposed to have the deposits checked. Um, but there're pe, there're people still find ways around them, sometimes unintentionally, because there's just cash there. Um, sometimes intentionally. So my concern would be that you create an, an accounting issue that's difficult to know when there's been a breach. Plain and simple. Um, now, that said, I've just told you all the problems, I'm now gonna acknowledge the reality here. This is the twenty-first century and there is a new way of raising funds out there, that's just true. Uh, we had a debate at a church war meeting last night about whether you have online giving and whether you, you, what do you do with the three percent charge? That, that's attached to the online giving. And if you're thinking, well, what about the type? Are you really giving ten percent or are you giving seven percent? I mean, you, you go around the circle, right? I, you, at least someone thought that was funny, you know, three fifteen, I had eleven fifteen. So, so my concern is that there're, there're equity issues, there're potential accounting issues. All of these give rise to potential legal issues. But if this is something that the board thinks is important, then that's my job to work with Mister Hale to develop the procedures so that it, so that it is as ethical and transparent and accountable as it can be.
That's what I would like, because I'm thinking about, for years, I've heard parents say, "I'm tired of selling overpriced, uh, cookie dough, wrapping paper, whatever, candy, all that." They, "Why can't I just make a donation to your class?" You know? We don't really want our kids out pedaling in this day and time, pedaling to all this stuff, so.
Well, and so to that point, Miss Dillinger, there is a system in place where a principal can do online crowdfunding.
Okay.
And so you have, there's a system in place where the funds come into the school. They'll use, that still creates some equity issues, right? Because, because you're, you're pitting this school against that school.
That's just the way it's gonna be.
Your policy, and, and, and maybe I misunderstood, so your policy already allows crowdfunding at the school level. My understanding was the debate here was, should you allow it at the classroom level? And so, I come back to, you're creating an administrative headache. I mean, I, we have a principal in the room, we have several former principals, former principals in the room. Imagine ha, having to track the, the online fundraising efforts of all of the teachers on your faculty and be certain that they were hearing the book. Maybe you're okay with that. And maybe you think. So, so, my, anyway, if the, if the board wants to empower each of the teachers to do that, then we'll set up some administrative procedures and protocols to prove, test it as much as we can. I can tell you that I do not know of any other board that's embracing this concept right now because of the potential ethics issues.
I think it's don't ask, don't tell right now. We're not gonna find out what you're.
Well, and you're probably right about that, Miss Dillinger, and, and, and the problem that you run into is when that's discovered, the comptroller gets called.
I bet.
And there's you, and, and I'm, I'm just gonna be very honest, the, the client that I've got that's doing this is looking at, at a criminal prosecution for two educators because, and, and there's no evidence that those educators put any money in their own pockets. It's all based upon failure to follow uniform accounting procedures. And so the problem that you run into is, when you don't follow the uniform accounting procedures, the assumption is, if you can't account for the monies, you did something with it. And so, i- it's, it's, it's a, you know the old saying, a burned child fears fire. Uh, it's kind of where I am right now because, you know, because I, I've seen the problem. But, I also recognize we're in a different age. And so if this board thinks, you know what? This is, you know, we understand there, there's a risk of cannibalizing the fundraising within a school and pitting classroom against classroom, but there's a way to manage it. Then I think what I'd like to do is get with Mister Hale and with Doctor Flannery and maybe some principals and figure out how we keep from cannibalizing within a school community. How the principal maintains oversight over what, what his or her teachers are doing. So you're not beating your parents to death. Because, because I understand the wrapping paper, you know, wrapping paper, if, if, candy bars, it, it, you beat your parents to death.
Right.
All you're doing is you're cluttering your inbox now with it. So it's the same problem. Um, anyway, it, it's the wisdom of the board, we can do whatever it is.
We need, definitely need to talk about it more, but, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm not telling you no, I'm telling you that if you want to do it, it's gonna, we're gonna have to do some thinking. It's not as simple as.
Right.
Changing shall not to may.
Thank you.
Okay. Safety? You done, Chad?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Safety committee?
Uh, just had a oral report and it's just that the safety committee met earlier in the week and discuss, discussed some safety issues for the system.
Anything else? Anybody have any questions? Okay. Staff report. Mister Hammond?
I just have the textbook selection committee, uh, is that dropped, Jennifer? So you have that list. Does anybody need that clarified? We have, um, a lot of members on it, but there's technically five that are, that are the official members. But all the members have the same responsibilities, uh, to, to look through the textbooks and make recommendations. Uh, that will come before the board for textbooks, uh, for reading in grades K eight and in literature in grades nine, twelve. So basically what we need you guys to do is just to approve the, uh, the makeup of this committee and the members on it.
Salute. This is the reading and the literature committee?
Yes, sir, for the textbook adoption.
Second? Second. Uh, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
Excellent motion. Thank you, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Next time I'll request all my stuff being all at one time.
Nope, I'm sorry, energy systems group.
This would be organizational call.
Yes. We're gonna have a call meeting for energy systems group.
Can I bother you on that, if you don't mind?
Yeah, bother, bother me to death.
If we could allow this, uh, man, the energy systems group, to give him the first air or whatever. But we would like to go and finish the twenty-six policies we have left in section five.
Yes.
On that same night, if we could, please.
Okay. Let's schedule that meeting. No, we're gonna do it right now. Everybody get your calendar out.
The week of the eighteenth through the twenty-second.
Of January, February?
Can we do it the nineteenth through the twentieth?
We're gonna be going for it.
Now, that's the week before.
That's the week after.
Anybody got a problem with the nineteenth?
Uh, are you spending five nights up here?
You're taking the bed.
Eighteenth.
I got some eighteenth.
Let's don't do ballgame night, basketball started. That'd be, so Wednesday would be a good night because it would be ballgame.
What time you start, gonna start it?
Uh, let's start at. Is that good with you?
I'm starting for.
On the twentieth? On the, the twentieth.
Yeah.
He said four.
Four, yeah.
We'll do policy.
You good?
Twentieth?
I'll tell you.
At four?
Four.
You're gonna start with policy?
We're gonna do the policy then.
If I get late, that's fine.
Five. Philip, you good? Twentieth. Call me.
Oh, E S G's doing four, and then four to five, and then, and then policy will start at five, or?
No.
No.
Do policy first.
I thought we should do policy first.
That'd be great.
And then do Sarah's at five and then get back policy. Makes your talking be easier.
All right. Policy at four, E S G at five.
Thank you, sir.
All right. W C E A?
Thank you all for your diligence to solve the world's problems.
Thank you. Round table. Mister McLean?
I don't have a thing, sir, good night.
Okay. Mister Gang, uh, Hammond?
Uh, enjoyed the Jones World kids and let's go.
Meredith?
Well, I've been with.
No, I'm done. Mister Cannon? Mister Danger?
Sounds good, let's go.
Mister McLean?
Well. Can I make a?
Will you entertain a motion, Devine?
Thank you.
Mister Day?
Devine?
Yes.
I'm gonna go on. I'm going on with or without you. Uh, great job, John Farrell, I'm interested, John Durham does a great job as a music teacher. Uh, Tawana McKinney is doing a good job, keep up the good work, and welcome, Lakin.
Mister Flannery, do you have anything to say?
No, sir.
You sure?
I'm dead sure.
December meeting?
December meeting will be moved till five o'clock because of our Christmas party that we'll have after the board meeting, spouses is invited. And the meeting, the Christmas party will be at the, what is the name of the? The Heritage at the, over here next to Fleet City.
It's.
We're not having it downstairs, we're gonna have it over there at their meeting.
So we'll be here at five.
December the fifth?
December the fifth.
And when we finish, then we go.
Hopefully it won't be nine or ten.
It'll be earlier. Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Yes. So, that's, staff and everybody, so.
Oh.
If you're bringing a date, what you know, I would be careful.
I'm bringing the date.
So the meeting's gonna start at five?
Yes, meeting starts here at five. Everybody have a safe trip to Nashville. And we'll see you next week.
You got shirts over here if you didn't get it.
Thank you.